2022, clerk?
Thank you, your honor. We have 12 present and voting and civic clerk.
All right, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for an invocation offered by Sister Melanie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sister?
As we come to the end of another busy pause to ask for enlightenment for this one more important meeting of this day. God of life and hope and light, guide the persons gathered here this evening as they deliberate, discuss, and decide matters that affect the lives of others. Keep minds and hearts open to hear the concerns and thoughts of others. In addition to common sense and responsibility, inspire creativity and vision and insight. At the end of this meeting, may each person leave feeling respected and a vital part of the growth and vibrancy of the Green Bay community. We ask this and all good things for each council member and for those who are important to them. Amen.
Thank you so much for those wise words, Sister, and for everything you do for our community. Appreciate you joining us this evening.
Thank you.
And now we are on to the item that I think brings many of us here tonight, which is the oath of office for all of our alders, the entirety of our council. So I want to welcome all of our guests to the chambers. This is about the crowdedest house we've had in some time, for good reason. So appreciate everybody coming out to celebrate our city council. We also are joined by the esteemed, the honorable Judge Zeitmelder, who's done this a few times for us at the City of Green Bay. And he is going to lead us through this process of swearing in our council. So thank you, Judge.
Earlier today, I swore in the county board. And I addressed them at that time, and I share with them a couple of reflections. First of all, today, on April the 19th, 1775, a group of our forebears gathered on the greens at Lexington and Concord. And they stood there to defend their freedom as troops marched by to seize gunpowder. And one of those arrogant officers had the guts to tell our forebears, "Disperse, ye rebels." Well, we haven't dispersed that day, nor any day since. I also want to remind you that 161 years ago, Abraham Lincoln, who I greatly admire, called for 75,000 volunteers to defend the Union. That call was because he understood that this republic is a great experiment, that until we became into existence, people were ruled by individuals who had an accident of birth, were born to be a count, or born to be a duke, or born to be a queen or a king, and they ruled over people. However, this republic established, and our forebears fought for it. The only exercise of power over people comes by their consent. That consent is granted in an election. You are all to be honored tonight because your neighbors, your friends, your family members, who know you the best, have honored you by electing you to these positions. All they ask of each one of us who have a public trust is do the right thing. I'm confident that you will. It is my honor then to swear each of you in. You will please stand and raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name. Being duly elected as the alderperson from district, and state your district. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you so much for being here, Judge. And congratulations to all of our alders. Now we'll move along to our first item of business here, the election of our common council president. And so this is an open nomination process. There aren't any seconds that are required. It's a little bit different than much of the business that we do here at the council. But with that, I will open the floor for nominations, and Alder Galvin will be recognized. Just one second, Bill. Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the nominations, I'd like to ask Attorney Bungert if she has any information on the roles and duties of the president and the vice president of council, so everyone knows exactly what we're nominating people for and what we're voting for. Thank you.
Attorney Bungert?
Sure. So our ordinances provide the composition of council and the designation of council president and council vice president. And it provides that at this meeting, on the third Tuesday of April, the council shall elect a president for a two-year term. And the president, in the absence or inability of the mayor, presides at the meetings as the chair of council and has the powers and duties of the mayor, except the president shall not approve an act of council with which the mayor has disapproved by filing objections. And the vice president essentially would take over the duties of president in the event that the mayor and the president are unavailable. And then in addition to that, the president of council also has the ability of convening committee of the whole for purposes of discussing items for committee of the whole using the entire body of council.
Alder Galvin? All right, I will entertain nominations. Alder Stoyer?
Motion for council president, Jesse Burnett.
All right, very good. Any other nominations? Alder Scannell?
Motion for council president, Bill Galvin.
Thank you, Alder. Any other nominations from council? Excuse me, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. We have two candidates for the office of common council president. And the way this works is just with a roll call vote, a verbal, public roll call vote. And obviously, comments are welcome. So Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion that we go to closed ballot.
Okay.
We've done that every time I've ever been in office, and we can do it in open ballot. That's certainly fine.
We did not do that two years ago. That's the only time I've ever lived through this vote, but it was an open ballot.
I guess I don't remember that. That's a long time.
It was on Zoom. It was a little bit of a different experience.
Maybe that's why.
Alder Scannell?
Yes, I'd like to just say why I nominated Alder Galvin. It's not any problem with Alder Burnett. I think he was a fine president. I think he'd make another fine president. But I believe that we alders, we're only here for who knows how long, and I believe any alder that hasn't been a chair, or hasn't been a vice president, or hasn't been a president and wishes to fill those roles should have a shot at it. So that's why I'm supporting Bill Galvin. He hasn't been there. Jesse Burnett has. If both hadn't, I'd probably be banging my head against the wall trying to figure out, but slip a coin something. But anyway, so that's why I'm supporting Bill Galvin. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alder.
Was there a second to my motion? Or we kind of jumped over?
No, I was going to come back to that, though. Alder Weary made a motion to have a closed ballot on this election, seconded by Alder Stevens. Just wanted to check with Attorney Bungert to see if that was in order.
I'm not seeing anything that would say that it's out of order, particularly because we don't have any bylaws or rules setting against it or prescribing a particular method. So it's essentially up to the discretion of the body how they want to proceed with the vote.
Okay, sounds good. So we had a motion to make this a closed ballot. It was seconded, it was made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Stevens. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes appear to have it, so the ballot is closed. So we will vote via civic clerk. Our clerk will view that and state it, and that's how we'll do it. It will be recorded in there, just so everybody knows, but it will be private and closed here.
You may start your vote for Jesse Burnett as council president.
And that vote is successful?
Eight to four.
So with that, congratulations to our council president. Yes, Jesse Burnett, for some comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all members of the council, those who voted for or against me. It's a tremendous honor, and it's a great responsibility, and it's one that I don't take lightly. So if there's anything that I can ever do, or recommend, or advocate for things in your district, please let me know. I think you all should know by now that I take the role of council president serious in that I have to protect the institution of the city council as a body, as an independently elected body of city government. At times, it can be uncomfortable. We know this in divisive times. But I will never use this position to divide people, but only bring people together, but also quite seriously protect the dignity and the role of an independent body of city government, even if at times that makes me a target or people are critical of that purpose. So thank you again for your trust in me, and I will not let you down. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder, and again, congratulations. And now we will move along to the election of our common council vice president. Any nominations for that office? Alder Stoyer?
Brian Johnson.
Alder Johnson has been nominated by Alder Stoyer. Any others? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Appears we have no other nominations. Nominations are closed. I don't know if we need a closed ballot on this one. So I would entertain... Yep. Any comments from Alder Johnson or anyone else? With that, the ayes? Oh, okay. Yep. So all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? It appears to be a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Alder Johnson. And with that, we'll take a little bit of a timeout so we can reshuffle the deck and have our vice president be seated on the dais here. We'll be informal for a few minutes. I'll call the meeting back to order. Apologies for that delay. Just had to resituate our council here, so appreciate your patience. With that, I will entertain a motion, a round of approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended from February 16, 2022, and March 15, 2022. I believe that motion was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Any discussion here? Any changes to be made? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? Those minutes are adopted. Onto approval of the agenda. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and that agenda has been approved. Onto the report by the mayor. Just really want to, again, welcome new members to our council. Congratulate everyone on their victories. Really glad to have everyone here, including friends and family. This is a really important moment for the City of Green Bay. That occurs every two years. And appreciate everyone being here to celebrate our new alders and those that are returning as well. You know, when I was thinking a little bit about what to say tonight, I was remembering this quote from Mario Cuomo, who said that "You campaign in poetry and you govern in prose." I don't actually know how true that is. I haven't witnessed too many poetic campaigns in my life, honestly. But I think the observation there is that, you know, there's a little bit different way of communicating on the campaign trail versus governing when it comes to working in local government, state government, federal government. I think that rule sort of applies. And so we'd just welcome you all to come together, to unite as a council, as a city, to do what's best for our residents, what's best for your constituents. I think that's really what kind of binds us together as those who are elected to office. So again, congratulate you all and welcome you into that pursuit with the rest of us here. So with that, we will move along to a few items before us, announcements from our council. Alder Stoyer?
Your honor. First, I'd like to thank the citizens of District 10 for re-electing me for the sixth time. They must like me, or whatever, but I appreciate the effort on that part. I would also like to mention that this month is April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Teal is the color to wear and support a survivor, so I have one on here. If anybody would like one, I've got a whole number of these. So if you'd like, come up to me after the meeting, and I'll give one to you. So that's all for now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Alder. Any other announcements from our council? Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to congratulate each of you for winning your elections, the honor serving with each of you. Also, this is always awkward because, you know, we oftentimes are saying goodbye to people who serve the city who are not here. So I want to thank Alder Dorf and Alder Gerlock for their service to the city, and I appreciate all the work they did for the citizens of Green Bay and those they represented. Thank you.
Well said, Alder. Any other comments from our council? Alder Eck?
Well, and it is an honor for me to be here, too, so I thank all of my constituents for voting for me. I do have an announcement. There is an event coming up. It's called the National Day of Prayer. There's a luncheon at Riverside Ballroom on May 5th. I know we have a council meeting between now and then, but that's like right before it, so I wanted to give everybody a chance. It's at 11 o'clock at Riverside Ballroom, and the proceeds go to N E W Shelter.
Great. Thanks for that announcement, Alder.
Welcome.
Any others from our council? Seeing none, we'll move along to our appointments and entertain a motion on reappointments. Motion to approve. Are reappointments made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Those reappointments are approved. Onto the new appointments. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion here? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed in the meeting packet, under the report of the Traffic Commission, there was a letter to request that an individual appointed to the Traffic Commission have the experience or expertise of, I think it was a state or regional traffic commissioner, a traffic officer of some sort. Just curious about this reappointment and if it aligns with kind of what that request was from the Traffic Commission. If not, if there's the opportunity, I guess, to open that door for a future appointment.
Yeah, that's a fair question and a good one. Alder Stevens probably can speak to this a little bit as well. But Mr. Teeters, I don't think is an engineer, does not work for the state DOT. But he does this work for the town of Ledgeview and is, of course, a city resident. So he's got good experience in terms of planning and things of that nature. Obviously, interested in having somebody with engineering experience, either with state DOT or some other entity. But we were not able to find someone with that level of expertise. We did give the commission and our traffic engineer some time in trying to identify a candidate, but that was not successful.
Okay. And I want to be clear, this is by no means speaking up against the appointment of Mr. Teeter so much as it was trying to honor and recognize the wishes of the committee. And I wonder perhaps if it might be appropriate, and perhaps the legal could weigh in on this. You know, I'll wait till that agenda item comes up.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. Any other comments on our new appointments? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and those new appointments are confirmed. Question for either our clerk or city attorney. Do we have individual votes on standing committees and boards and commissions?
I think it can just be, yeah, one whole vote for the slate as it's presented.
Great. So I will entertain a motion on both standing committees and boards and commissions with one roll call vote. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck. Any discussion on these? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and those appointments are made. Onto ordinances, second reading for adoption. So a motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up these ordinances with one roll call vote. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. And just, you know, I might pause a little bit here to let the new folks know what's going on. This is oftentimes done with non-controversial ordinances and resolutions, to kind of take them all up with one vote rather than having a roll call vote on each individual item. If you object to that or have, you know, any issues, you can always weigh in and let everybody know. But that's what Alder Scannell is doing right now. So we do have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and take those items up. Items up with one roll call vote, all in favor will signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Motion to adopt those ordinances, rather, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. Any discussion? Alder Johnson?
Yeah, I just need the record to reflect an abstention on item number one, is the petitioner is a member of my executive committee that oversees my compensation.
Very good. That will be noted. Thanks, Alder. Any others? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote. Thank you. I'll be ready to display the vote.
And then send live, right?
Yeah, and then send live, right. So that vote is 12 to nothing, to adopt.
12-0, that vote was unanimous. We've just got some issues with displaying the vote, so we will figure that out. Onto report of the sustainability, actually, a presentation, which is a presentation on the Sustainability Commission's 2022 work plan. This was held over from the 3/1/22 council meeting. So with that, we will invite, yes, our Chair, Seth Hoffmeister, up to the podium.
All right, we've got some other speakers as well. Hi, everybody. How are you all today? Congratulations on your election. It's great to see some familiar faces and some new faces as well. Look forward to working with all of you. I'm Seth Hoffmeister. I'm the Chair of our Sustainability Commission. And I feel really fortunate that one of the first items that we get to present before this new council is our work plan for 2022, 2023. So I believe we have a slideshow somewhere queued up here. And we have a number of members who are much more knowledgeable on a lot of these topics than I am to talk about some of the things that we want to do together with city council, city staff, across the community, with other governments, and with citizens that care about some of our shared values. So I want to talk about, before we get started, what the purpose of this work plan is. So this isn't a policy proposal. This isn't a fiscal document. This is a vision. This is the beginning of a commitment to work with you all on some of the things that we want to work on together. We know that every decision, every hard decision that you all have to make here on city council weighs a lot of things. We know that if we fail to act on some of the biggest environmental issues of our time, it's going to cost us a lot of money in the long term. However, to be completely realistic, a lot of the solutions are also going to cost a lot of money today. So we're making a commitment here to bring to you the information that you need with data, fiscal information, to make that decision. So we'll queue up the slideshow if we're ready to go. I could channel my inner Alder Scannell and tell some jokes in the interim. Yeah, right. I'm going to get the shepherd's crook off the stage here, so maybe I won't do that. I want you guys to support what we're saying.
Just one moment. Our Director of IT will pull that up for you. Apologies for the delay.
Andy, what color is the wind? What color is the wind?
What color is the wind?
Maybe blue? Too predictable.
Should I start printing?
Sustainability was the commission?
Yes, Sustainability Commission.
All right, Mr. Hoffmeister.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so we have a few experts on our commission and myself to talk about some of our goals here. So first off, you know, as I began to talk a little bit about, this document is meant to focus our work. There are so many different environmental issues that we could address within the City of Green Bay, at a state level, regional level, global level. But we really want to bring items to you that are going to be solutions, that we can actually implement, things that are going to be worth our time, things that the community wants to do. We also know that government, community activism organizing can be a little chaotic, especially in this virtual, in-person world. We want to make sure that we're being incredibly proactive and transparent about our goals. You're going to see four big issue areas that we want to address. And again, the purpose of this is to provide proactive transparency so you can know what we're doing before we do it, while we're doing it. before we do it, while we're doing it, and when it comes to you for the final decision. And again, we want to make sure that we're having realistic attainable goals. We could talk all day about the things that we ought to do, that we should do, but we want to talk about the things that we can do, and that's what we're going to bring to you. Again, just especially for new folks or folks that have been around for a while, our commission is advisory. We have citizens, we have city staff, we have Alders, and we're going to do a lot of the, a lot of the legwork to research the proposals, to do all of the data, the fiscal research, the scientific research, to make the best proposal. That's going to go to the appropriate committee for a vote before finally coming to you, council, for the final decision here. Throughout that process, we invite a dialogue. I would love to get to know all of you and talk more about some of our goals, but at the end of the day, y'all are the decision makers. And again, it's more than just the commission, it's more than just city council, city staff. We have a number of folks in the community who are here, who are on the Zoom that care about these issues, and we want to make sure that we're relying on community input to make sure we're driving our work to make Green Bay more sustainable. So again, we're going to have four big issue areas that we want to talk about. I'm going to talk about the first, which is clean energy. So we have already set, as a city, 100% clean energy commitment. This is a twofold goal. It's 100% clean energy commitment by 2050 for city operations. That includes the lights, the heat in this room, these buildings' operation, our city fleets, all sorts of things like that. That was a decision that was made by council, but we've also set a goal, 100% clean energy, community-wide, the city of Green Bay, my apartment, our businesses, our industry, 100% clean energy by 2050. This is a lofty goal and something that we don't expect to figure out right now, but that's why we're going to work a couple decades at it. So with lofty goals means we need to have pragmatic plans, data-driven solutions to get us there. We've already done a lot, and we've done so without really any budget. Early on in the formation of the Sustainability Commission, we partnered with NWTC to benchmark all of the energy usage for city operations. It was a really wonderful partnership because we know that NWTC students need experience doing this, and we needed to benchmark our city operations in order to hit these goals. So the first thing you do when you want to hit 100% clean energy is figure out what you're doing, and we've done that. And that's honestly going to save us a lot of money moving forward. Now, when we think about that community goal, there are, you know, lights on, I hope I didn't leave any on in my apartment, but there's a lot of energy usage all through the community, businesses, industry, residents, all sorts of things like that. We need to figure out how much energy Green Bay is using. That's a lot bigger of an issue and a lot bigger of a task, but that's something that we're working on in partnership with our energy utility, WPS. Now, doing all of this groundwork is going to lead us to what our biggest goal is for clean energy, and that's the development of a comprehensive energy plan or a climate action plan, which is going to be the roadmap, the plan, the specific actions that will help us get there. We've asked for funding from the state of Wisconsin to help us bring together experts at the city level throughout the community, to have all the right folks in the room and working in partnership with the water utility and with transit, with the university, with NWTC, of course, with the energy utility, with the Oneida Nation, to help us figure out how we can hit that 100% clean energy goal as a city, as an institution, this building, all of our operations, and to be that convener, to set that vision, to hit that goal moving forward. So it's going to be a very, it's going to be decades' work, but that's why we're getting started right now. And again, there's going to be a lot of times that we're going to come back here with very specific fiscal impacts, scientific impacts, that we will ask for your support on. But again, this is just the beginning of the work that we plan on doing in the next few years, and yeah, I can't wait to continue that. So you get a break from me for a little while. I'm going to pass it over to another commission member, Julia Nordike, to talk about climate resilience.
Hi, good evening. Congratulations. Thank you so much for having me, us, our committee, tonight. Really excited to see you in person. I'm so excited to be back here in this room. So my name's Julia Nordike. I work for the UW Madison Secret, and I've been working in the community for over almost a decade on water resources. And why is that so important? The city of Green Bay is located on one of the greatest water resources on earth, and we are also the second-largest coastal city in Wisconsin. So that's a really big responsibility for us, and with that comes a lot of big coastal issues and climate issues. So, and we have really what the climate resilience part of our work group is all about, is really about the people and the community of Green Bay and keeping them safe, making sure we improve quality of life, and then also, you know, making sure our local economy can continue forward as we experience these more intense rain events and more intense natural hazards in general. So most of our work plan, we've been focusing the last couple of years on flood resiliency and been working with the city to do some hazard assessments, and that's going to, work is going to continue. So we have a lot of great science about what kind of impacts we can expect in, for our city, and then we're going to really take more of a deeper dive to see who in our communities are being the most affected, and then also just work with our sustainability coordinator to develop a flood resilience plan. And then a part of that, part of the whole big picture too, is thinking about how we can really invest in our city's infrastructure and like, and build those community assets. You're investing in these really big assets, and they should really come with a lot of co-benefits, including quality of life and public safety. So we're really excited to talk about some green infrastructure projects coming up. I would be happy to talk to the council again with more about that information, but thank you very much.
I've found a lot of sick kids lately. Just trying to not share the love. We get our... Use the mouse. Thank you, sir. All right. Hi, I'm Ned Dorf. It's a new day, it's a new council. Hope you're all feeling ready to do some good work together. My piece is on healthy habitat, and our goal in that, in that area is to create and preserve connected, productive, and safe habitat corridors throughout Green Bay's land, air, and water, and really establish some good corridors within the next decade. What we're looking at this year, as far as our work plan, is to look at creating a native plant's first policy for city lands. So that is where we would look at our landscapes on our, on our parkland, on our DPW land, and if that land's not being used for anything in particular, like a sports field, a playground, what have you, look at whether we can convert some of that to some native plantings. And native plants, as we know, can encourage healthier habitat for birds, for pollinators, and they can provide multiple environmental services such as reducing runoff, filtering water, and reducing the amount of mowing and spraying that we'd need to do on city land. Regarding the next bullet, it says establish a no-mow-me policy. We've done a lot to encourage pollinator protection in the city, including our pollinator corridor project, which has become a work group within the Sustainability Commission. And we've also established guidelines for an optional no-mow-me for residents. A lot of work has been done by Steve Grenier and Melissa Schmitz on setting up the procedures for that, and also getting, I believe we have some signs, hopefully. We're good to go. Good. And we worked closely with the city of DePere to follow what they did for their no-mow-me and learn from their successes and failures and how can we do better here in Green Bay. So that's the second thing we're looking at this year for our healthy habitat. The third thing is, is to look to the skies above and develop a dark sky ordinance. Light pollution isn't always thought of as, as a form of pollution, but it certainly can be. And here in Green Bay, we're a major flyway for a lot of migratory birds. Light pollution can distract them from their flight patterns, and it can be a way, if we look at what other cities around Door County, around the Milwaukee area, Madison, have, have all put in newer lighting ordinances to reduce the amount of light pollution in their cities. So it could also be an added benefit for, for folks who are looking for an open night sky as amateur astronomers. So that, that'll be another thing that we look at over the long term. And I think I'll just stop talking now. I hope you guys have a great night. Thanks for listening to us. Well, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mark Walter. I'm also part of the Sustainability Commission. My day job actually deals with waste and waste reduction. If you've ever asked any questions about recycling or food waste or anything else, odds are I'm the one who's answering your questions. This is actually a fairly new goal for our Sustainability Commission because it's something that we've been looking at, and a lot of this came out of just last year, the state of Wisconsin finished what was called a landfill waste characterization study statewide. And as part of that, and as also part of an EPA study, they determined that at least 25% of the waste going into landfills is food waste, whether it's coming from the farm, or whether it's coming from your household, or whether it's coming from grocery stores, or where it's, wherever it's occurring. So looking at that, it's actually pretty reasonable to, to look at how can the city actually establish a process to help with that waste reduction by actually collecting food waste, organic waste, and pulling it out of your garbage. For a while, the county actually had a drop-off food waste program, and we had a couple hundred people voluntarily bringing us their food waste and dropping it off. So we know that there are, there is precedent for this, that it will work. I mean, people are really enthusiastic about it, if we have a better process. So in, you know, within the next 10 or so years, looking at actually establishing some type of pilot program to divert that food waste from the landfill will, in the long run, it'll save the city money. You'll have less material to pick up, less garbage going into the landfill. It cuts down on methane. And actually looking at that community-wide, probably over, again, longer range is pretty reasonable. And it has happened throughout the US. I mean, we know east coast, west coast, it costs a lot more to get rid of garbage, so they've been very successful at establishing food waste programs in California, New York, Massachusetts. We don't always equate to that, but Dubuque, Iowa, has a great food waste program. You can't say that we're that much different from Dubuque. So if they can do it, we can do something like that. It'll take a while to get people educated and go forward. There are also a lot of existing programs that have been tried. The city of Milwaukee's got a pilot program that they're still running. City of Madison has started and stopped, started and stopped a couple times, looking at programs. Stevens Point has a program. So there are other pilots out there that have worked that we can learn from and move forward with as a, as a pilot to establish this. And again, it would actually save the city money in terms of, and I'm, you know, I work for the county's solid waste department. We run a landfill. It costs you money to put material in a landfill. We take the money out of that, or take material out of that landfill, you're paying less for the tipping fees. There are, which can then balance out a collection process and actually potentially pay for itself in the long run. So there are some definite options there. There are also, under the current infrastructure bill, there actually are recycling grants out there now through the EPA. Food waste is a target nationwide for reduction across the board because of the methane reduction that will come from that as part of it. So certainly we can look at that in the future as well and aim for a better way of managing our waste in the future. And it would, so it would be a partnership with city operations. I know Mr. Grenier and I are pretty well acquainted over the last couple of decades now, Steve. I represent the county as well in my day job. We know we've worked with you to do Green Bay. They have, they have a great program through their environmental management business institute that looks at food waste. They're actually doing some collections on campus as well. So we have a number of options out there. There's a local guy who just started up within the last year or so called Greener Bay Compost. He's, you know, he's a good example, but how do you scale that up for a citywide operation? And how do you use something like that? And what do you do with the end product? There are still things that we have to research and, and develop a process for. But our long-term goal would be by 2030 to have that reduction in place for the city and 2050, community-wide. Thank you.
All right. And then I guess to wrap things up, we have one more slide here. Our general goals and principles. So everything we do as, as a commission, but really as a city government, should be rooted in community involvement. We have some really, what we think are great ideas that we're going to bring forward. And while we have a lot of really great folks on the commission, it's really rooted in all of the folks in the community that are bringing these ideas to us, bringing the ideas to you, and then coming to us to help make it happen. Really, any of these things won't happen without folks getting involved. And to that end, we want to make sure that as a commission, we're doing our job to involve folks, to make sure people know about all the different initiatives that we're doing. We also know that environmental issues are linked to racial justice and equity. Folks that are often the most impacted by environmental issues are often the most marginalized in our communities, and we want to make sure that the folks that are closest to the problems are the folks that are helping come up with the solutions and that are at the table. We also know that there are volumes and volumes of data, research, best practices, lessons, pivots that we can learn from. I mean, that's the great thing about our work is we don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are examples in Wisconsin, there are examples all throughout the country that we can learn from, we can adapt to our own community. And we also recognize that it's, it's tough times. I mean, it's not easy managing a budget. The last couple of years have been really hard on citizens, on governments, on all sorts of folks. We know the cost of doing nothing will be greater when it comes to a lot of these issues, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're bringing proposals that will save us money in the long term, save us on energy, save us on all sorts of things, on the cost of cleaning up flooding, but aren't going to put a burden on us today. So with that, we're going to open it up to any questions that you have. And again, I hope this is just the beginning of a really incredible dialogue that we can have throughout the next two years.
Excellent. Well, thanks so much to our commissioners for the presentation this evening. Thanks to Melissa Schmitz, who's our resiliency coordinator, for all her work with the commission to put these pieces of the puzzle together. So with that, any questions from our council? Alder Weir and then Alder Johnson?
Mr. Vice President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Hoffmeister and crew. You do a great job. I like how you put together your information. That's going to be critical, I think, you know, as you know, to, to moving things forward. And I think whenever the Sustainability Committee comes up, I always mention costs, right? I mean, let's see the benefit for the cost. Really do your research there and lay that out. I know we had a big discussion not that long ago about some green roads. No one really knew what they were or what they did, but the cost was 40, 50, 80, 100% more than a normal road, and we really didn't know what benefit we were getting. If we had that information, we could really make an informed decision. So I know that puts a lot of work on you, but you said you were ready for it. So keep up the good work, but really try and delve into direct and hidden costs in the cost-benefit analysis, and I think that'll help a great deal. Thanks.
To Alder. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. So Seth and I actually met earlier today, probably almost two hours, I think, and I found it to be a very enlightening discussion. And if he's got the time, I'd encourage everyone here, every Alder, to, to find some time to, to meet with him and really kind of discuss, I guess, sort of, you know, the real depth, I guess, of what they're trying to accomplish here. Because quite frankly, what the end result is something that we all ought to desire. And, and one thing that we talked about in particular that I just wanted to at least publicly state, Mayor, and not only for, for your benefit but for all of council, we have an ad hoc facilities committee that was formed to talk about future of the police department, potential of city hall, municipal court, maybe some other facilities within the city of Green Bay. And when you start to think about, obviously, buildings that have a 50, 75, 100-year lifespan, and we're looking to be clean energy by 2050, 2050, well, now's the time to be incorporating those discussions. So we don't, I believe, have anybody from Sustainability Commission on, on that ad hoc facilities committee, but maybe when the time is right, we would, we would, you know, invite them to come in and speak with us and, and kind of have that discussion about how we can collaborate a little bit more on that. So.
Absolutely. Well said. Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also met with Seth, enjoyed that, and I know the commission very well, different ways. And I will be on that commission, so I'm looking forward to that as well. Is this the cart before the horse as far as talking about Eliza Street? I talked to Melissa today. Is that something we can talk about, or we have to wait till tomorrow?
I, I, I think...
If, if we gotta wait, that's fine.
Melissa?
Melissa, I defer to, I defer to Melissa.
Hi, I'm your resiliency coordinator. The cart is a little ahead of the horse.
That's fine. We can wait.
That's an item tomorrow evening on Sustainability Commission agenda. So we'll talk about them. Okay.
It's not bad news. I'll just, I'll say that. I said it's not bad news.
I'm excited.
Right. Exactly. Yeah, for sure. Any other questions or comments from our council? All right. Thanks again to our commissioners for all this great work. Appreciate your time and effort. Sorry, one, one final. Are you sure? We can, you sure? We do have a question from Alder Eck.
Yeah, I, well, my question was, you, you were talking about the food waste. I didn't see anything on here specifically about composting and making the compost available for, say, purchase.
A lot of that is still to be determined because part of it is we have to have a willing partner and an end use for that, for the compost. So you can collect all the food waste. That's actually pretty easy to do a collection. But then what do you do with it? The county's process was actually to work with a local hauler, and they were hauling it down to the biodigester in Oshkosh, and they're converting it into compost down there. That's a very expensive process in general. I mean, that's a $5 million facility, and you're running trucks 60 miles a day, you know, each way. It's not a sustainable process. So what we have to do is take a look at what are some of the other options locally? Are there farming operations that we could cooperate with? Is there a hauler who may be, in, in my world, a public-private partnership would be optimal. So it's still things that we have to figure out in this process.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. All right. So with that, we will move along to the report of our Sustainability Commission. Motion to approve. Alder Scannell. Alder Galvin?
I want to go to the floor for interested parties.
Alder Galvin. Alder Galvin makes a motion to open the floor.
Can we make a second to motion to approve first? Sure. I'll second that.
Sure.
Now I'll ask if we can open the floor.
Sounds great. Motion has been made to open the floor, made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. So just a reminder to those who are present, we might have some on Zoom as well. But if, do you want to read them?
Yeah, I will.
So our clerk will read the names, and then if you just want to approach and state your name and address, that would be appreciated.
Yes, thank you. First, we have Amanda Chu. And then we'll have Charles Frisk, and then Christina Shelton.
Floor is yours.
All right. Do I need to give my address? Is that a part of this?
Sure, yep.
Okay. So Amanda Chu, 1633 East Mason Street, Green Bay, right next to Happy Joe's. I'm a resident in a neighborhood that's along the East River. I'm a former elected county supervisor, and I served on the Planning Development Transportation Committee. I'm a small business owner. I'm the president of a regional farmers cooperative. And from all of these perspectives and backgrounds, like, I'm just here to amplify the support around developing climate resiliency planning, to hit all of these key points that are named in the work plan here and presented to the committee. Like, creating a resilient community overall is going to take a whole host of stakeholders, and public institutions are like top on the list of those who are responsible for, for protecting the longevity in these, like, the assets in the short term and the long term of what we have developed in the community. And so, but by no means are they like the only. And I think Seth did a great job naming some of the partnerships, especially on clean energy. I'm hoping that our Brown County Clean Energy Subcommittee can join that list of partners as they endeavor to do similar things. So there's a lot of synergy around within the region and, you know, because the impacts of, of climate change don't like hold back at the borders because, because of, because it's the natural environment. And in all our hubris, we can't control what that is. So, but what you do have control over now is to really give consideration to this thoughtful work plan that's data-driven and evidence-based. And it's exciting to hear that there are thinkers who are able to put the financial impact components to what this is, so we can understand as, as closely as possible the true cost of inaction that we'll all be responsible for together in the future. And just a couple things. I mean, living along the East River, the severe flooding events, so building, building around the plans that, that would reduce like surface water pressure, like, all of those things would be really helpful for the community that I live in. And so along with that would be stormwater management and the municipal code amendments and green infrastructure code audit recommendations that Mayor will probably be coming before y'all. Let's see. So I guess in closing, I'd say that we expect that the government appropriately evolves to plan for resiliency and reduce the burdens on community now, which I understand is typically a financial burden, and the, the burden on community, you know, after you're done serving in this office and protecting us in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Chu? All right, seeing none.
Your Honor, there is someone on Zoom, Natalie Hoffman.
Oh, okay. We do have somebody joining us on Zoom. So what we, we try to do when we can is alternate between in-person and, and those who are on are Zoom. So with that, it sounds like Ms. Natalie Hoffman would like to speak. So please just state your name and address for us.
Yeah, I muted. Muted. I got it. Okay, cool. So my name is Natalie Hoffman. Address is 1217 Chicago Street. So I'm here tonight to speak, obviously, in support of the work plan presented by the Sustainability Commission. So I'm currently a substitute teacher, and I live near the East River. And I just got done campaigning for city council. And I did lose unfortunately, but like, you know, I am happy to see new faces on the council and a lot of people that seem really dedicated to the work of making our community better. And with that being said, an issue that I know I care a lot about and heard many folks around my district talk about and are concerned with in our city is the flooding issue. And I'm really happy to see that the commission brought forward some equitable and realistic goals in order to combat flooding and other climate change issues. It's no secret that, like, you know, Green Bay's been dealing with flooding for a long time. And I've only lived up here for about six years, but in that time, I have seen the flooding get worse in our area. And if we don't start taking stronger and more bold action right now, we will have a bigger problem to fix further down the road, and more damage will be done in the meantime. So I think it's really important. I wanted to emphasize the idea of the, of a flood plan that would balance gray stormwater management and green infrastructure solutions. That would be really beneficial to our community, especially the folks who live in higher-risk areas of flooding near the Fox River and the East River as well. And I know they also addressed other issues, including transitioning, transitioning to clean energy, reducing waste, and preserving our natural environment. And that is all going to help our community thrive down the road, both environmentally and fiscally. I am a huge supporter of the climate and a huge advocate for climate justice. And I care deeply about the well-being of our environment and the people in this community. And by taking care of our environment, we will be able to make our community more resilient and stronger to flooding issues and other climate issues that we could face down the road. And I think that, again, the commission has presented us with amazing solutions to the problems that we face. And, you know, this is my home. It's all of our home. And I think that it's important that we take care of it and do so at the local level, because that's where we're going to make the most change. So I would urge all of you of the Common Council, Sustainability's Climate Justice Goals for the future and the sustainability of our little community here in Green Bay. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from Ms. Hoffman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Next, we have Charles Frisk.
I'm Charles Frisk. I live at 560 Sunrise Circle in Green Bay. And I am here speaking as a private citizen, but I'm a, I'm president of the Baird Creek Preservation Foundation, and I'm a board member of the Clean Water Action Council. And speaking from the standpoint of the Baird Creek Preservation Foundation, when Ned was talking about healthy habitat for all, I was so excited, I'm about ready to jump out of my skin. Because that's exactly what we're trying to do as an organization, is build wildlife corridors and to get rid of invasive plants and replace them with native species. And ecologists have found that the more native plants you have, the more native wildlife you have, the more diversity you have, the more ability that environment has to adjust to change. And regardless of what we do, there's a lot of things in place that climate change is going to get worse in our lifetime. And it's going to be way worse in my granddaughter's lifetime. So we need to do as much as we can. The old expression, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. We need to do as much as we can to slow climate change. But we also need to be realistic and realize it is coming. And the city of Green Bay is, and, you know, the whole state has to start doing things to armor itself against increased flooding and the climate change that's going to occur. But if we don't do something about climate change, we keep hearing about costs, the costs of not doing something are going to be incredible. Right now, we have a world-class walleye fishery. We have great musky fishing on the Fox River in the Bay of Green Bay. If that reaches a certain temperature point, the oxygen levels will drop, the eutrophication of the system will get much, much greater, and we will just have a big pond for carp and bullheads. And that's basically what it will support. And it wasn't that long ago that that's all the Fox River did support. And since that time, we've made a lot of positive changes. We don't want to see all those go away. Now, the most effective level to deal with these kind of problems is at this level. Right now, at the, at the federal level, anything to do with, when you mentioned climate change, is such a partisan issue that I just don't think they're going to get much done. And so it's going to take every little community doing their part to make the differences that need to take place in this country. And hopefully enough, you know, enough communities get on board, that the changes will occur. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of more detail. I'd like to say that from my viewpoint as a citizen, as well as a member of groups that are strongly concerned with the environment, the Sustainability Commission's goals are incredibly good. And hopefully, we will follow through with them as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisk. Any questions? All right. Thanks again.
Okay, next we have Christina Shelton.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christina Shelton. I am the state representative to the 90th Assembly District. Congratulations to all of you for your recent elections, and good luck to you. Your success is our success. I am a Green Bay resident. I reside at 1045 South Webster Avenue. I'm a mom of two kids. I've served on the Green Bay School Board. And I have been a fierce advocate for clean energy and climate resiliency, both at the local and state levels. In fact, one of the tasks that my legislative office has taken upon us is to convene a quarterly roundtable with climate justice advocates and local partners around the city to connect around issues exactly like we're hearing tonight. I want to thank Mayor Ginrick and the Green Bay Common Council for creating and supporting the Green Bay Sustainability Commission. The commission's dedication to the protection, stewardship, and improvement of the environment in the interest of health, prosperity, and the welfare of our Green Bay community is a shining achievement for our city. The commission reminds us that all of us, together, must work with focused intention to ensure a thriving community for both present and future generations. I applaud the commission's 2022 goals outlined in the planning documents we heard tonight. They are certainly aspirational, but they are doable, and they are achievable. As Wisconsinites, we are hardworking and we are resilient. Once again, we must be up to the task to rise up to the growing challenges of our time, leading with courage, data-driven science and research, fiscal responsibility, and a community-centered approach to problem solving. The plan put forward tonight by the Sustainability Commission demonstrates how Green Bay is and will continue to be a leader in climate resiliency planning and clean energy transitions. Setting a goal to move to 100% clean energy by 2050 and developing the climate action plan that Seth mentioned is a critical first step in embedding science-based strategies to reduce greenhouse gases and to address the ways that our climate is already changing. Strengthening our resilience to climate-related hazards and natural disasters will ensure that all who live here can do so knowing that their families and their homes are safe. And creating and preserving a connected and safe habitat for our land, air, and water will remind us that we are all connected to Mother Nature. And reducing the amount of organic waste entering our landfill system will have a significant impact on cutting greenhouse gas emissions for years to come. Green Bay's sustainability work plan and goals will make our community better for residents, businesses, and industry. From farming to manufacturing to outdoor recreation, our economy depends on fresh, clean water and fruitful land. The goals put forward in this plan and supported by the state's Clean Energy Plan that was just released this morning by Governor Evers will serve as a roadmap for Green Bay so that we can build a strong, sustainable community through clean, renewable energy resources, good-paying jobs, and strong business growth. So I urge you, let's continue to work together and protect our vast and vulnerable natural resources. From planting our family veggie gardens in the summer and in the spring, which is coming, to teaching the next generation how to hunt and fish, to planting native wildflowers with our kids, these are all traditions and values that we all share. And it's not something that we can or should take for granted. So please, continue to support the work and the goals of the Green Bay Sustainability Commission. Please, because the future of Green Bay and of our kids depends on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Representative, for your testimony and for joining us. Any questions for our state representative? Seeing none. Any other testimony from our guests? Seeing none. Entertained a motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. We did have a motion to approve the report of Sustainability Commission. That was made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on this report? Seeing none. All in favor will signify by saying?
I'm a...
Alder Eck?
Sorry, I need to be a little higher up with my, my hand here. Thank you, Your Honor. And, you know, it's my, I guess, first time here, right? I looked over all of it, and there's a lot in there. So I guess is this where I say that I feel like needs to be broken down a little bit more? And there, just as is, there's a lot in it, so I would not be able to approve it.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I would ask the Alder then, what would she like taken out of it to be able to approve it? I mean, how small does it have to be?
Well, I mean, Chris had, or Alder Weary had a good point about breaking down the costs, because as is, I, I do agree that we need more information on that, the costs of each of these areas.
Alder Galvin?
Okay. Alder Steyer and then Alder Scannell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think one thing that we should take into account, it is a plan. So plans can change. You know, we're going to get facts, we're going to get figures. I think this is more or less just to state that it's out there, and we're just approving the plan. It's not saying that we're, it's cast in stone because we don't have figures for it yet. So that's how I'm looking at it.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, it's a roadmap. It's not set in concrete, and it's not specific enough to have costs. I mean, some of these plans aren't going to be realized for a number of years. And who knows what the cost will be in a number of years. I mean, it just would be completely unrealistic to try and put any cost to anything now, especially since it's just a general guide that can be changed, that they may change, or we as a council may change. So it's, it's, you're not really putting too much skin into it now, just saying, go ahead, this plan looks okay. But, you know, we reserve the right to, well, we're going to have the final say. Anything they bring for us, we have the final say. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. And just a reminder for council, a reminder for myself also, you know, if you could press your button in civic clerk, I will try to be better about looking there to see who would like to speak. It's been a little bit challenging with the hybrid meeting going between Zoom and in-person. So been falling out of that habit a little bit. But if we could just try to press your button, that would be helpful. Alder Brunet?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, there are some things in the plan that I want to learn more about, and I'll... You know, there are some things in the plan that I want to learn more about, and I'll do that on my own time, or I'll review the Sustainability Commission meetings. One thing to keep in mind that all of these things, because it's open government, there will be things like on this plan that will be discussed as part of their monthly meetings, and that's reported out, and then the council has the ability to vote for or against those sorts of things. It's an advisory committee. I do hear the concerns, there are some things that I also question, but overall, I think too, it's important to know that as dollars are proposed to, to address some of these issues, that will always be voted on by this council. So, we can vote for it, we can vote against it at that time, but a work plan just kind of guides their committee work, and at any time, at any moment, any member of this council could propose something to be discussed at that Sustainability Commission, and the concerns can be addressed there. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. On to the Report of the Improvement in Services Committee for the meetings of March 23rd, 2022. Oh, my mistake, skipped over RDA. Report of the Redevelopment Authority for April 12th, 2022.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Now, Report of the Improvement in Services Committee, March 23rd, 2022, April 13th, 2022. Motion to approve has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Is an item here that, that an Alder would like to pull?
Yeah, most of the stuff under here is in my district, so I took it on topic after I looked at all this, and I think a lot of it is...
Alder Campbell, just to, just to let everybody know kind of how, how everything works here, you just, you pull an item or items from the, from the report, and then, and then we can discuss them when I recognize you.
Okay.
Is there a singular item or a number of the items you'd like to pull?
Number three, four. And I did look into number one.
So, one as well?
Yeah.
One, three, and four? Okay. Items one, three, and four will be handled separately. Any others? Hearing none, all in favor of the remainder of that report will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved with the exception of items one, three, and four. On item one, your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. The item was pulled by Alder Campbell, and you have the floor. So, this is on item one.
So, I did knock on both doors there, no response. It's a very small sidewalk. There's an alley next to it. I don't know what it actually is built at. It seems like it's half-occupied, possibly. I couldn't get no response, just trying to get my feet wet here and understand how the process works and show that up, and try and help out a guest and, and look after my constituents. So, that's about it, that's just a follow-up on it, so I would make it a motion to approve, I guess.
Okay. So, Alder Scannell did make that motion to approve, so that is the motion that we have on the floor. Yep, and that has, that has been seconded. So, no more discussion on this one then?
No.
From you, Alder? Okay. Seeing none, then, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. On to item three, wishes of council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Stevens. Item was pulled by Alder Campbell, you still have the floor.
Okay. So, and also, I did go there, found the location. It's kind of a blind area, although it's next to a dead end, leading up to Webster Avenue, so from ways back, it looks like there's not even a road there, so it just looks like it continues. I can understand possibly, maybe if there was an accident there or something that maybe have caused a problem here, or, but I did talk to somebody that lived on the corner there, and they, so it's 11:11, possibly, and, I mean, sorry, maybe 11:12, and so I got up, talked to him, and he said, actually, that was his relation at 11:08, and he made it understood that really there wasn't a problem there, I was just investigating the situation. Everything was pretty cool. I says, well, I can understand, and I ran into it while campaigning, that in the alleys in that district there, or in that part of the district, and the fire department requests numbers on the back, I can totally understand that. So, I would think possibly, maybe there'd be a stop sign on the end, I don't know what a, a study, light study would be, but, you know, there is a no-through sign that's across the street, but it's after the street, so I think maybe that's just a blind, blind spot there, and I think it could be resolved. I don't know, I guess if a stop sign doesn't cost that much there, maybe all along that, leading up to that new, maybe it's a, you know, part of a new thing we're learning here with Webster being redone, so, I mean, I think, I could see a stop sign there, you know? And anyway, so I did get to talk to the people, so.
Okay, great. On that note, you might want to, if you're interested in investigating a stop sign, you could put in a communication that would go to the Traffic, Bicycle, and Pedestrian Commission, and they could take a look at that.
Understand that, okay. A little deeper in, but, okay. And do I do that right now, or?
No, you could do that at the end of the meeting when we entertain those.
All right, thank you.
So, basically, in support of the action of the committee at this point?
Yes.
Okay. So, we do have a motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion on the side of? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been received and placed on file. On to item four, wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. The item was pulled by Alder Campbell. You have the floor.
Again, right, right down, down the street from there. My neighbor actually works at packaging, he walks the walk every day. I just happened to talk to him today about it. It looks like there's more than appropriate stuff there, other than he said in the winter, then they can't put all the cones out there in the walkway and such. I think, I don't know what the proposal is for the flashing light, exactly what and the cost. It says it's solar, so, you know, there would be pretty easy there. You know, it's an everyday thing. He kind of made a comment, was like, I don't know why, they just don't sell the street to the Green Bay Packaging, but that's another issue, I'm sure. Maybe I thought, while I was sitting there watching, everyone was empty, so there was nobody, the cone asked no one. You know, I don't know what it would be to have a button possibly there, so I'm just thinking beyond, beyond the grid here. If there was a button to stop the traffic so people could walk, kind of like what we have in our streets. So, you know, whether it be the cost difference or whatever, again, another great idea, other than a walkway across, but, you know, probably not probable. So, I would look to go along with it again, I just was trying to, you know, research it and make sure. Alder LaFabe, I think got it going, so I think that was good, and addressed it appropriately, so, you know, whatever was going to happen from there, I'm not sure, but, again, talking to an employee there, he supported it too. He's like, yeah, well, sometimes people just think you're walking, they just go right around you, so, and they do it every day, so.
Yep. Okay, well, thanks for those comments, Alder. Director Gner probably has some thoughts, just in terms of how these, these rapid flashing beacons operate, and what do they look like?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. The RRFB, you've probably seen and not even realized that if you drive down South Webster in front of the hospitals, the pedestrian-actuated flashing beacons, that is an RRFB assembly. So, it is pedestrian-actuated, much in a similar vein to what happened with the hospital corridor when South Webster was being reconstructed. The hospitals jointly came to us and requested that RRFBs be installed on South Webster Avenue. They were funded by and continue to be funded by the hospitals. In this case, Green Bay Packaging would bear all costs, and if the, if the posts are struck, if they're damaged, if anything happens, where maintenance or replacement has to be considered for those RRFBs, those ones in particular would be paid for by Green Bay Packaging for any maintenance or replacement. So, there's no capital outlay to the city for that.
Any further comments, Alder? We all good?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That item has been approved. On to Report of the Plan Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary, and this is to approve the report, reports of the Plan Commission from March 21st, 2022, and April 12th, 2022. Any items here to be handled separately?
One.
One?
I hit the button.
That's okay, just, we're looking for items right now, so items one to be held separately, two, one, two, and nine. Any others? All right, items one, two, and nine will be held separately. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The reports have been approved, the exception of items one, two, and nine. Your wishes on item one?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. That item was pulled by Alder Johnson, was it?
Yeah, I think there are probably a lot of people here wishing to speak on this item, but before we do that, if I could perhaps ask Director Stecchulte to just provide a high-level overview for us, what's happening here?
Sounds good. Director Stecchulte.
Absolutely. Thank you, Alder. Essentially, this is the summary of the project. This is for essentially a mini-storage warehouse project located at 4,000 block of Shampo Road. This is essentially in the joint planning area with the, with the Town of Scott, so this is, followed the process of going through the joint planning process with the town, as well as review from staff here and Plan Commission. This was actually sent back once for additional information at that point. I think the primary concerns at this point were simply whether or not the use was specifically going to be appropriate in matching the comprehensive plan. The issue is here is certainly, in a nutshell, is probably long-term utility provision to the area to provide additional or more intensive uses to the area. At this point, there has not been any activity supporting that, so the petitioner is asking for a use that would not require those utility uses. So, the long-term growth designation is essentially for this area, essentially, the city staff is recommending, and as well as Joint Plan Commission, a kind of a higher and better use for this particular area. However, at this point, again, certainly the petitioner is, is, is asking for, for direction to be able to proceed with the development that would require those utilities at this time.
Director Stecchulte, could you tell us, when was that comprehensive plan created?
That was created, I believe it was, it's 20 years old, so it should be, I believe, in 2020, 2003, I believe.
And that was part of, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was part of some type of agreement, was kind of what I understood with the Town of Scott when there was an annexation of that area?
It has been adopted by both communities, yes.
Okay, so, so the Joint Review Board that's established between the city of Green Bay and Town of Scott, is that an advisory board where they, they make a recommendation, but the final say, because this is now within the city, resides with the council, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just kind of want to understand that. Thank you. And then, so obviously, the, the request before us is to designate this to light industrial use or rezone it to light industrial, other than, you know, reading through obviously some of the, the letters and communications that came through to us, other than using this as a, it's, it's, obviously, the petitioner's identified what their desire is. When you rezone this to light industrial, what other types of uses could potentially occur on that site?
I guess I'm going to turn that over to our principal planner, David Buck, to give a little more details on that, if that would be acceptable.
And the reason, of course, I'm asking the question is because that was a concern that had been brought up by a number of the residents in that area.
Thank you, Alder. Yeah, there are quite a few different uses. I don't have that open right now, the exact list of uses, but there's quite a few. So, they, they run anywhere from a light industrial, such as a warehousing, to more active manufacturing, processing, some transportation uses. Typically, those are going to require council approval, however, so like transfer yard, truck transfer yards, you know, those types of industrial uses. Not heavy, that would have outdoor, major outdoor storage of noxious materials like coal or salt or anything like that, but pretty heavy processing, and generally, those types of uses generate a lot of traffic, typically truck traffic, sometimes operate 24 hours, that kind of thing, more intense than a commercial type of use.
Okay, thank you. And then, one last question, and then I'll have a motion. When, when we worked with developers, and they come before the city, they're, they're anticipating a land acquisition, would you say that it's common for developers to first come and ask for a rezone before they, they close on the purchase of a piece of property?
Certainly, in most cases, I would think that would be the case, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I would just make a motion to open the floor to hear from interested parties.
Next.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open.
Your Honor, we do have some people who've already signed up.
Great.
I do not know if Mr. Seth Lenz is here in the audience. If not, then, next is Mr. Joe Moore.
Mr. Lenz should be on Zoom, yep, he's got his hand raised.
On Zoom, okay, yes, thank you, then, let's go to Zoom.
Okay. Mr. Lenz, if you want to just unmute yourself, state your name and address for us.
Seth Lenz, N8877, Wellers Lane, Luxembourg, Wisconsin, 54217.
All right, go ahead, sir.
All right. First, I'd like to thank everybody and the members for taking their time to hear my proposal. I apologize I'm not there in person. Unfortunately, this whole process has taken a lot longer than I anticipated, and I am out of town for this week. I did send over an email on Friday about this project to try to speed this up for tonight. Hopefully, all of you were able to read through that, and I'd just like to say that I'm here since, and if, if any of you did not get it, because I did, did get a couple emails that got kicked back for new members, so that's the only thing I really want to touch base on and, and state that I'm here for any kind of questions you have for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lenz. Any questions from council? Seeing none? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joe Moore.
Mr. Moore?
I'm Joe Moore, N2743 Elm Road in Pulaski, and I represent the sellers with Seidel and Associates, a commercial real estate agency through Shore West Realtors here in Green Bay on Lombardi Avenue. I just wanted to speak in support of the project on behalf of the family, which is, I believe, eight people that need to approve these sales, and I just wanted to address a few things that have come up in some of the correspondence that's come back and forth, and I'll try to keep this as quick as I can. But first, to address the argument of spot zoning, this is a 10-acre parcel, it's bordered by existing highway and commercial properties. That includes a wholesale nursery, which encompasses over 65 acres of land. The one resident who is directly to the east of the property is a part-owner of the subject property and is in support of the project. That is the only city of Green Bay resident that this property would actually affect, and she would be on that inside corner, so as far as traffic and everything, she's, you know, getting it twice, so. The subject property does have a high visibility from the highway, but it has poor access. It is over a half a mile drive from the bottom of the exit on 5457 to the nearest property line. This is the last property on a dead-end road off of another dead-end road, and the 10-acre parcel is isolated from the rest of the Commerce Center, and with plans currently in place to begin discussions on modifying or drafting a new comprehensive plan. The first meeting was in August, and it certainly needs to be amended with the lack of development that's been out there since 2002, 2003. This plan can now be designed with a project already in place and worked around. In fact, at the planning meeting, Mr. Buck did say, look, whatever the decision the planning department makes, we'll work around it, and, you know, we'll make it happen. So, that was kind of an important thing for the, for the developer to hear, that the city would be willing to work with him on this. And as far as addressing sewer improvements, should the city of Green Bay assess property owners, which would be really the option to get sewer into this property to make it more viable? The city would actually be responsible for approximately, and Director Gner is going to have to maybe verify these numbers, because I'm off a little bit using the GIS maps, but the city of Green Bay would actually be responsible for the cost of 700 lineal feet. Frank and Doris Accuri, who are the part-owners that live on the corner, would be accountable for 200 feet, and Mr. Dan Madigan, who is also a property owner, would be accountable for 175 feet. The cost of the city is due to policies in place regarding improvements in wetlands and a credit for a property owner that's located on a corner lot. So, based on the proposed cost from August of 2021, when I got those numbers from the Department of Public Works, that would work out to approximately resident Madigan, $66,500, resident Accuri, $76,000, and the city, $266,000. Those funds owed in those assessments would be deferred, and they would not be paid. Uh, those funds owed in those assessments would be deferred, and they would not be paid until those, uh, residents sold their property. And then to address the current comprehensive plan, now, when the plan was put in place, it was very nicely designed, it had a lot of collaboration, a lot of meetings, had a lot of folks came together, put, put the project together. But was, uh, it was developed without knowing the challenges of bringing infrastructure into this property. Of the uses listed, uh, in the comprehensive plan, I believe there's 84 total uses listed for mixed-use development and for commercial properties. Um, of those, the way the land currently sits, the only two, um, projects that could be accomplished there would be surface parking and a parking structure, uh, both of which would also require planning and council approvals. So for the property to have any kind of significant value, a change to the comp plan, to the light industrial zoning, or sewer improvements would need to happen. And finally, just a financial, uh, review on this. Uh, since the developer's project does not require sewer, um, we're looking at an immediate, uh, savings over bringing sewer in of $250,000 in the future sewer improvement costs, uh, to the city. Uh, with the successful closing of the property, the seller will pay an assessment due to the city of $80,916.75, that was for their assessments when they brought water into the site. Uh, the current tax revenue collected by the city for this 10 acres is approximately $200 a year. And this is a, uh, approximately $2 million project, and it will require no financial assistance from the city. So for all those reasons, I support this, and I hope that you'll consider it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions? Mr. Moore, just one sec. Alder Stoyer?
Apologies, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nice to see you, Mr. Moore. Um, I was, I guess, uh, there has been a little pushback by some of the folks that live in the area. Now, right across the street, you're talking about the Town of Scott, correct?
Yes.
Now, from what I'm looking at on the map, are these some commercial properties? Are there residential properties there?
There are, there's actually, so that area is, um, supposed to be future residential. Um, that's how the Town of Scott has it in its plan, is that that's future residential. However, since this development plan, plan came out, uh, a couple of commercial properties have been developed, uh, despite what the comprehensive plan calls for. Um, and of course, the developer wants to be a good neighbor, um, you know, whether it's through wayfinding signs, whatever it might be, but being a dead end on the end of a dead end, uh, we don't see any kind of, uh, significant traffic impacts, uh, to any of these neighbors. Um, uh, we don't, I mean, the impact on a, on a storage facility is going to be much less than if you brought in, say, a grocery store or a convenience store, a gas station, um, multi-family living, so it's actually a really low-impact project.
Well, I know some of the talk is trying to get the, the strongest and best use of that property, and I know it's been sitting there for quite some time. You know, looking at the, the Green Bay citizens or businesses that are around there, it seems pretty, you know, pretty good that way. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of resistance. I would think it's more from outside of the city. So that, that, that's just the thing I'm trying to weigh right now, but I appreciate your, uh, testimony.
Right, and you do need to consider that. I mean, the Town of Scott and Green Bay has a good relationship, and of course, we don't want to hurt or harm that, and, and the developer is, you know, obviously, he's well aware of that, and he would love to be able to do his project, but, you know, at the same time, being sensitive to, uh, to the people that are out there who, I mean, really, they would just like to keep
Right.
a very natural area and not see any development on this parcel at all.
Right. And Alder Johnson did bring up the fact that, you know, there's a, an agreement between the Town of Scott and the City of Green Bay, so was there, or when you navigated that, was that an issue as well?
Uh, yep, so, uh, there was a meeting, a joint board meeting between Town of Scott and Green Bay. Uh, this was a, a joint meeting that was, uh, four-to-one vote opposed to the project. Uh, when it went to our Planning Commission, our Planning Commission sent it here with a recommendation to approve the project. We sent it back for further discussion, and then the Planning Department had, had flip-flopped, but, granted, they had a, a new member that wasn't there the first time around, and, um, but yeah, they had, had made the change then to send it back here, recommending denial.
Okay, well, thanks again.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore? So, any other testimony from the audience?
We do have one other person.
Okay, one more.
So, there is one other person, Shannon Sorenson.
Hi. My name is Shannon Sorenson, 1005 South Clay Street, Green Bay. I represent Scott Development and 7180, which are made up of landowners who own about 300 acres in the University Heights Business District. A brief history on the business park. This land was annexed over from the Town of Scott 20 years ago, and when that happened, a few things were promised and created. The City of Green Bay promised to bring water to the town's land, and the city promised to bring a major hub business to the area to kickstart development. And a joint Planning Commission was created between the Town of Scott and the city to make sure that development benefited both communities. For the record, the Joint Planning Commission and Town of Scott were consulted about rezoning this land industrial for storage uses, units, and they voted against it. And those two committees represent thousands of town members and city members. I've heard people say nothing has happened out here for 20 years, so we should just accept this. I feel that the lack of development is because the promise for water and a major hub were never fulfilled, and part of the lack of development is because previous mayors and city staff were more focused on other areas of Green Bay, downtown and the 43 Business District being the two major ones. The city owned quite a bit of land in the 43 Business District, so it made sense to push businesses there instead of to University Heights. I'm not saying these things to point fingers, but more as an explanation for the lack of growth. The positive thing for University Heights is that it is the last major chunk of land in Green Bay, and our new Economic Development Director and our Principal Planner, David, are, they see the potential for the area, and they are currently working to improve it. The easy decision is to prove anything and everything that comes along, but easy isn't always right. 10 years ago, the area by Costco and Target was mainly farm fields, and look at it now. If you, if planning is done correctly, and I know our Economic Development Department is on the right track, University Heights could be remarkable, but it can't be if you do spot zoning. I wasn't going to talk about money, but Joe Moore brought it up. So, a quick history, the parcel in discussion used to be one giant parcel owned by the Weber family, and about 20 years ago, they sold off a chunk to Aurora for $1.3 million. And when they did that, and Aurora was brought in, infrastructure was also brought in, and neighboring landowners were assessed for those. The Webers, instead of paying the full amount for their assessment on Aurora, worked with Public Works to divide the parcel up and defer that assessment. Maybe Joe doesn't know the full history, but it is sad and frustrating to, um, to hear him talk about how the sellers have such a large assessment if they choose to improve the land and there's nothing else to do out there besides storage units because of it. It, when I know full well, they chose to defer the se, assessment, and have had 20 years to invest and grow their $1.3 million. It feels to me that now that the bill has come due, they forget about the community that supported and helped them profit greatly in the past. For all the above reasons, I support the Planning Commission's decision to deny rezoning Shampo Road for storage units. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions for our guest? Thank you. Entertaining motion to close the floor? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, signed by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The floor is closed. Discussion from Alders? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Stechschulte, uh, Ms. Sorenson here spoke about, uh, some of those promises that, that the city had made, um, when that plan was first created, water, sewer, things like that. Could you just, uh, speak to that a little bit from the city perspective, and, and were we contractually obligated, or, uh, was that perhaps rooted in conversations that had occurred then? Any insight you might have from a city perspective?
I think, certainly, obviously, excuse me, just in, in very general terms, I think the, obviously, the use of a, of a TIF district was probably the most likely, uh, mechanism that would have been used to pay for that development, uh, but without any increment occurring, uh, certainly was a chicken-or-the-egg situation, I think, in terms of, uh, trying to get infrastructure util, uh, out, extended to the site, uh, conservatively, and I think, you know, certainly, I think from our finance director's perspective, having a project in hand to, in order to move forward, like a development agreement saying there is a project, is an easier justification, and certainly a much more fiscally responsible process to kind of make that investment through a TIF district. But without having a, a project in hand, it is difficult, and it is certainly some risk, and if there was any borrowing from the city's standpoint, there is risk involved, certainly from the city, to do that speculatively without having one in, in hand. That is certainly a policy decision for this council. Excuse me, um, but, so, I thought, to this point, there's, I think, the, is, is my understanding is the process has simply been to try to wait for an anchor tenant to kind of, try to recruit someone there, and then be able to install utilities and have that, that facility essentially pay enough increment to help justify that investment.
And just to, I, I think I'll call on General Manager Quirk to relay a little bit, um, of an expanded history, I mean, this is obviously going back 20 years, I don't know that any of us were here at that time, um, but there was an intent to, um, to install some of those utilities using the right-of-way from 5457 when it was being expanded. State DOT said, nope, you're not going to do that, and so it, it became very difficult, but, um, General Manager Quirk, if, had an...
Sure, um, and that was part of a border agreement, and then the water supply agreement was in that border agreement to serve the Town of Scott. We, um, that was one of the connections that they said, but as Director Stechschulte said, it was based on the TIF district. The money was always supposed to be funded out of that TIF district, and the city was responsible for paying that. Um, when we did that, we, we've met with the town a number of times with our lawyers, um, and some of the conditions within that, they had options to do things to get that water out there. Um, they chose not to do that because they couldn't afford it. Um, and then we, we were also struggling because we had no funds in our TIF district to work with that. Um, we, we've been meeting with them, we did do a design out there, but as the mayor also indicated, the D, the DOT said we couldn't cross, um, certain pathways, and it would, it really upped the construction cost to a couple million dollars, and again, we did not have the funds to move forward with that, and we met with the town on that, um, a number of times.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Director Stechschulte, again, uh, Mr. Moore referenced that without running stormwater, uh, or rezoning, the only use would be a parking lot or, or, or a parking garage. Can you corroborate or, or deny that?
I don't think...
Kind of putting you on the spot, I know.
I think Mr. Buck has, has the list of those uses actually here, I think, pulled up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, there is, so I'm going to preface this with a, a statement that we have a lot of farm fields on the east side of Green Bay that do not have water, sewer, and it's sanitary service, that's really the issue, not the storm. You know, as the city grows, just as it, everybody, I'm saying something that everybody knows, the city grows, utilities grow with it, and density increases. So, I want to make that statement, so when you look at the land uses that are listed, um, and this is the mixed-use, what it's listed as now is a mixed-use district, there's really only two districts in that, uh, Commerce Center, is a mixed-use district and a light industrial district. The mixed-use district has a plethora of uses, uh, goes from residential, uh, service businesses, commercial businesses, um, there's just, there's just a lot of different types of uses that are permitted there. But almost all of them are going to require a sanitary sewer service. So that is sort of the chicken and the egg that, that I think Neil was talking about. This was adopted in 2005, there was a tid in place for, geez, 15 years? Um, ran in the red, uh, so it was closed maybe four years ago, three or four years ago. Um, with the full intent to, to institute another TIF district when a catalyst-type project were to come in that would generate enough increment to increase the water and sanitary sewer service. There is water service out there, there is some sanitary service, not necessarily to the site. My understanding that the cost to run that to this site, to the edge of the site, it's about $350,000 to $400,000. Sounds like an awful lot of money. It's 11 acres, you can get a lot of housing units on there, you can get a lot of commercial activity on there. In the grand scheme of a development project, that is not a lot of money. Not a lot of investment, um, when that project is, is due. So, I guess I could say even the, uh, surface parking lot would require council approval, and so would a parking structure, so those aren't permitted, you know, by right.
Right.
Council would have to approve those. Most of the other uses, um, that are listed here, you know, uh, housing, um, restaurants, libraries, they're all going to require sanitary sewer service.
So now, I, I presume, eh, you know, because of the, the Planning Commission was talked about in, in staff recommendation, that we'd like to see a, an alternative use there. You know, obviously, Ms. Sorenson had, had mentioned that, and of course, this is highly speculative, but that, that the city's efforts focused downtown in I-43 perhaps are what led to not being, you know, that site not being developed. Again, I think that's a little bit speculative, maybe, maybe not, nobody will ever be able to verify that. But, but really, the better question is, what other types of uses would you see there? And is there anyone knocking on the door?
I think just from an economic development standpoint, we're still dealing with the same question, Alder, and then that it's, in terms of, you know, we have a clear ability to provide utilities should a project come along. Uh, in terms of targeted marketing efforts, I have not seen, obviously, I've only been on, in the position a little over a year now, have not seen any targeted marketing efforts for this particular area. Uh, part of the question is because we didn't have a, a specific answer, I think, for that particular question. I think if there was, uh, at least an opportunity of presenting a, a, a specific plan for infrastructure for the area, that I think it would, marketing some of those other uses would certainly become much more viable. Uh, so whether that be, uh, even some of the light industrial uses that are identified, but certainly the mixed-use areas being right off of the, right off of the highway as it is. So, it is a very visible site. Uh, certainly, I don't argue the current, uh, access is certainly, uh, challenging. I, I think that could be something that could be fixed in terms of providing additional infrastructure and streets to actually improve that access should have, uh, a more intensive development happen in that area. Uh, but there just simply hasn't had the, the very clear, uh, avenue forward to try to provide, I guess, a higher and better use at the site at the current time.
Yeah, and I, I think the thing I just struggle with a little bit is, I, at the end of the day, I mean, nobody wants storage units, yet the only ones feeding that appetite is us. You know, I mean, it's the ultimate irony of, of, of what's happening with these types of proposals, and so, um, you, you know, and I just, I think about, okay, if, if, if you need them, because people are providing the demand for them, where do you put them? Um, it, it sure seems to me that everything here lines up, it's, it's, you know, I, I don't know that this truly, and again, this is another debatable point, but I don't personally feel that this necessarily fits the definition of spot zoning. I mean, you're talking about a 10-acre site, a 900-acre development, um, you know, but, but we, we modify zoning all the time here at this council. In fact, we got several, several of those requests on our agenda tonight. Um, and, and so I, you know, the, the one thing, and I've talked to Director Stechschulte about this that I really struggle with, is, is holding a property owner hostage by saying that we're, we're not going to allow you to sell this land unless stormwater, you know, storm is, is brought in here, and even though there's nobody knocking at the door to, to buy it, we're telling them that we're not going to let you sell it for this use, and, and I think I just, I really struggle with that, so. So I, I guess I'll turn it over in case any other members of council have a question.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Grant, and then Alder Stoyer?
Um, I just need to, um, say something too, on the record, that I did accept a donation during my campaign from a property owner, but I'm confident I can make an unbiased decision with this. Um, a few things, this is in my district, so I want to be, speak on behalf of a lot of my constituents. Um, within our packet and talking to people, a lot of people are opposed to this, like, um, Alder Johnson said, and I know a lot are from the Town of Scott, but we did make an agreement as a city to work with them, and I think that's something we have to keep into account when we're voting on this. And like Speaker, uh, Shannon said, I also grew up on the east side, I saw how fast Bellevue and all of that changed over, and I'm worried that we don't have a lot of growth on the west side left. Um, with, you know, I know the reservation is working on getting land or opportunities back, we met with them last week, and the east side I, is growing, especially in my neighborhood where I live, and this is not far from it, it's right up the hill. So I, I understand it's been sitting there for 20 years, but my concern is that we possibly prematurely, you know, assess, or took that over, and I, I feel like the growth is there now, and again, I just want to make sure we're listening to our constituents, and it is on the way up to Door County, I understand this is a half-mile away, but when people have been in the car for three, four hours, they are likely to stop an hour before their four hours, they are likely to stop an hour before their destination sometimes to get gas, food, whatnot. So I want to also keep that into account. Yeah, that's all I pretty much have on that.
Thank you. Alder Stoyer, and then Alder Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I might need someone, maybe Director Ellenbecker to talk on this, and then maybe I'll talk to Director Steck-Schulte as well. You know, the whole, this whole premise with the tid that we had out there, we ended up, it was there for, what, 15 years, and then it just, it died. I think we retired it. In fact, Alder Johnson, I think, I mean, we had those discussions, and I think we were waiting for something to happen out there, and it just wasn't happening. So part of the problem is that, you know, we extended sewer and water out there, and I just wanted to double-check what Ms. Oronson said, talking about the fact that, the fact that it was extended out there, that property owners were assessed after Aurora came in. I guess I didn't fully follow that. Does that normally happen if you get a developer or somebody coming in, sewer and water is extended out to them? If it's not there, that everybody else is assessed for that as well? Or would the cost, the brunt of that go toward, let's say, Aurora? It seemed like there was some concern about that, that they didn't really ask for it, but the fact is, we're a city, we're growing. I guess I just need some clarification on that. And as far as the TIF, you know, I don't know if Director Ellenbecker can help on that. I guess it was 15 years, and then it just kind of disappeared for lack of development.
In terms of assessing for utilities, I'd turn things over to Director Gneer, just to explain that process for folks.
Yes, that is common practice, that when infrastructure is developed and installed in an area, there are a number of ways that things can be addressed, and some of it is dependent upon the type of facility that's put in. Generally speaking, pavements, sanitary, and storm sewers have the ability to be deferred, whereas water main, because of the way the PSC regulates the Green Bay Water Utility, the deferral process for water main is much more difficult. And in that respect, what happens is the city actually will front the money and make Green Bay Water Utility Hall, and then we carry those deferred assessments on our books instead. So were there assessments levied when the infrastructure went in? Yes. Were all of them paid? No. Certain property owners, due to having the property remain in an undeveloped state, were able to utilize the ordinance and capitalize on having those assessments deferred. What happens in that instance, the way the ordinance is written, is that the assessments, the front footages that are assessed are carried on the books and at such time that the property is sold or developed, more often than not, it's a development that causes the, that triggers the assessment to come due, but they are paid at the rate in effect at the time that the assessment is satisfied. So if there was an assessment levied, I'm just going to make up numbers for illustrative purposes. If a deferred assessment was levied in 2005, and that assessment was $50 per front foot, and in 2022, somebody sells or develops that property, and the assess rate at, in 2022, is $200 a foot, they're charged the $200 a foot. Part of that is compensating the city for the carrying costs, the sunk cost, to finance that project over time. So were there assessments levied? Yes. Were all of them paid or some of them deferred? No, there's quite a few deferrals out there. Being one of the senior members of the senior staff, being around here as long as I have, I do have a little bit of the institutional history out there. Bear in mind that this tid was formed shortly before the recession in 2008 hit, and that was one of the primary reasons for a lot of lack of development out there. There has been discussion about access to that industrial park. Wisconsin Department of Transportation owns the access rights, and there are only a certain number of points of access onto 54 that are allowed. Most of those points of access are currently controlled by private property owners, somebody's private driveway. So literally, the city can't put a street connecting to 54, Algoma Road, because somebody has a private driveway out there. Until we're able to acquire some of those points of access, we can't extend additional roads connecting to 54. So the single point of access that we do have, we can spider web off of that, but I can't bring another connection out to 54 at this point in time. And, you know, we've already talked about some of the issues that came up. The plans that were originally drafted did rely heavily upon cooperation through Wisconsin Department of Transportation to bring the water line out there, and it was predicated on a catalyst project, providing tid funding to help support the debt service on that, neither of which materialized. When we actually went forward with the design plans and approached Wisconsin Department of Transportation, they had a change in their policy. No blame to be levied, it's just the conditions changed, and we were no longer able to provide, utilize the route that had originally been proposed, so.
Wow, okay. Normally, you know, when I look at this agenda item, it seems like it's pretty cut and dried, but you've got all these other layers on it. I mean, it's, I don't remember in my time in council ever coming up with a project like this that had all these variables. A lot of times what I do is I refer to the alder in question, you know, their area, and then, you know, what feedback they get, and you already mentioned some of that. I don't know if you can follow up on that, or would you say that...
Yeah, I think actually, I forgot to mention too, I also did hear from contractors, business owners, developers, that, I want to look more into this, but the city of Green Bay is not easy to work with. I've heard we've lost business and things to Bellevue, Ashwabanon, DePere, Howard, and I worry that maybe that wasn't developed because we're not making it easy for people to work with us. So I think there's a lot of variables in that, but yes, I mean, in the packet, like I said, we received majority of it as opposed to rezoning it.
Alder Stoyer?
I'm good for now, thank you.
And Alder Weary? Press it again. I can't do that. Alder Weary, and then Alder Scannell.
Sorry, Randy. Oh, boy. It's times like this that a crystal ball comes in handy, right? We'd all love to be able to see in the future and see which way is going to be the right path, and none of us have one. But, you know, my observations, here's what I do see. And I see, number one, a property owner who's sat on this for 20, 30 years, waiting. And we're telling them to wait longer. Is it going to be a year? Will it be another 20 years? They'll probably be long dead, and their grandkids will have to deal with it. That's problematic. Number two, as we heard, the current tax we're receiving on that is $200 on farmland. That's nothing on 10 acres. That's a pittance. And we also then heard a $2 million project is proposed. That would do a great deal for our tax revenue, and we all know, we all know our fiscal situation that we're in. We could use that money certainly right now. It's 1% of the total area. It's 900,000 acres, whatever it is, it's a big, big area, and this is 10 acres. And a dead-end road, I think the project would be low-impact. It's very similar to the projects right across the street from it. For this one, I'm going to oppose the motion to deny. Now, these are one of those weird things where you're voting no to deny it, so that if it succeeds, then you can bring it back and vote yes to approve it. So that's one of those trickles. I'm going to vote no on the current motion, because I don't want to deny it. I want to have this project. I think it's low-impact, and we can get some tax revenue right away, and that's my thoughts. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell?
Now, I'll unclick myself.
Give 30 seconds.
Yes.
Yes. Well, I'm going to vote aye for this, and the reason for that is several things. As mentioned, we've got a pact, an agreement, and a joint commission with town of Scott, and I think it's just, the reasons they gave to deny, I think, are valid reasons. It'd be different if they came up with reasons that didn't make much sense or had no validity, then I could see vetoing that, but to just thumb our nose at them just strikes me as terribly wrong. Why do we have an agreement? Why do we have a just joint commission? It's just, to me, that's just not right. And this development reminds me of another development on the north side of Broadway. There was a lot of similarities here, and there was a push to, you know, get a big development going on that land. And we didn't. We took our time, and look what's there now. And the set value now is much greater than what we would have gone with if we had said, if we'd have been going with expediency. So I realize this one's a little, has some differences, but on the main, I think there's enough opposition to it, especially concerning the town of Scott, who I think we should respect. We should respect our agreement with them, we should respect that joint commission. Unless they go off the hinges, I see no reason why I would go against that. So I support the denial as much as I would like to support this for expediency, because I know the people involved, I know Joe Moore's a good guy, and I believe the developer, Mr. Lenz is a good guy. I think they got some, you know, good intentions, but I just can't support that. Sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments on this item? All right, we have a motion on the floor, which is to approve the action of the plan commission. Yes, Alder Morgan.
Say I plan to vote on this, but I just received the packet, opened it last night, saw, I do know people involved in this. At first, I was thinking about abstaining my vote. Today, I talked to Attorney Bundert, and she advised me if I feel I can make a vote without any bias to the people I know and also a contributor to my campaign, that I can make a vote properly, so I plan to vote tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, I'm going to ask for a recorded vote, and just for informational. Most of our votes are voice votes, and you determine kind of which way it goes. If you really want to know where people stand and kind of get an exact vote, ask for a displayed vote. So that's just, you can always ask, anybody can. Thanks.
No, it's a good point. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor to approve the action of our plan commission, which is denial. So voting in favor is to vote in favor of denial, and we will use the board.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote.
Deny.
Okay, I'll beat it then. Thank you, Mike. Ms. Ek, please vote.
So we are having some difficulties with the display, so I will read the yeas are Galvin, Stevens, Stoyer, Scannell, Grant, Hutchison, Morgan, Campbell. The nays are Johnson, Weary, and Burnett.
Okay, so that motion has been approved. We are on to item two. Which is on item two?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. That was seconded by Alder Stevens. Item two was pulled by...
That was me.
Alder Stoyer. You have the floor.
I believe it, I believe that was me. It's been a while. Yeah, I was asked to pull this by previous Alder LeFave, and there are some citizens out here that would like to speak on it. So I would make a motion to open the floor.
Motion has been made by Alder Stoyer to open the floor, seconded by Alder Scannell. I'm in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open.
Yes, I have a number of people who would like to speak. It seems that these residents would like to speak as a group, so I'll call your last names. Wankowski, Guzanato, Ranki, Stubnor, and LeFave. Please come up to the podium.
And if you could all just state your names and addresses before beginning, that'd be great.
I have one. Capule Fave, 1731 East Shore Circle, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54302. And I know several of you people, and I congratulate you on your wins, and I guess I don't regret not running again. You guys have a lot on your plate. I know it's going to be quite a year. But anyway, the reason I'm here is I was the alder for this item back in March, and what happened is that, I guess, I did not know that only the owner of the strip mall would be notified. And this is something I'm asking, please, would you, in the future, if there are others involved in this, if you would please notify them of this meeting? That night of the meeting, I had two other Zoom meetings I had to be on because I had my own communications in. So I did not bring it up to the business owners. There's five or six of them involved in the strip mall, and so they had not their time to speak at this public hearing. So I'm asking that you would listen to them, and, you know, just to hear their stories, how this is going to affect them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And actually, oh, the Ranki, 4882 East Ron's Monroe and New Franken. I agree, I've been committed to the northeast corner of Green Bay for 28 years with salons. I had a salon on Main Street that was taken down across from Pick and Save for a Bank. I had a salon where Festival Foods is, north. They took it down, and it's Festival Foods, which is great. I moved across the street. I have individual studios for my independent stylists, and now I got notice that they're going to take it down for a car wash. There are actually eight businesses in that community. These are just four of us. There's also a restaurant called Rocky's. They're just over a year old. They're doing great business. The northeast corner has nothing like that. We have so few businesses. Like I said, I have the salon, there's a small church in there. I'm not familiar with them. Parish Insurance has been there much longer than I have. I've been in that location for 16 years. And then there's also ADL, which is a monitoring system business. I mentioned all of that. We say that we want to help small businesses. Right now, there are grants to help small businesses to get into areas just like the one I'm in, and yet, we're tearing this down for a car wash. We have about 40, 35 to 40 employees in that strip mall right now, and there are going to be three to four in that car wash. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Michael Wankowski, 1576 Pondros Avenue, Green Bay, 54313. I'm one of the aforementioned business owners I mentioned before. I'm 34 years old and just recently decided to pursue my dream as a small business owner. I opened my Wisconsin Roots Dispensary in May. I have over 2,000 active loyal customers and eight great, fantastic employees who are currently attending college. If this does go through, I am not sure if I will be able to continue my business, given the short notice, because I just found out about all this yesterday. Before that, I had no notice, no anything. So I'm here expressing that I care deeply about my business, as do the folks behind me. While I have only been there for a year, I have put my heart and soul into that place, to that community. 30% of my clientele are elderly, who would have a tough time getting anywhere further than where we are. So I just wanted it to be known that everybody at 2475 University Avenue deeply cares for their businesses and their future if those were to cease. So I appreciate everybody taking the time to hear us and listen to our words. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Nanette Guzanato, and I own Silver Thimble Quilt and Yarn Shop. I've had the shop for 25 years at University Courtyard. I've moved within the strip mall three times. The last time that I moved, I put 10 or 15,000, 10 to 15,000 into improve my business, to improve the suite that I had moved into, and I'm sure a lot of you are not familiar with it, but I have classes and clubs that meet weekly, and so aside from myself and the teachers, I have a very loyal customer base. A lot of people depend on me for the education and the community togetherness that they get there, and it's my life, you know? And I didn't find out about this until a month ago. Dee told me that she heard about this, and yeah. I am not going to move. I'm not, and the type of business I have, I cannot sell. I cannot do that in a month or two months. I need a year to close, when I do decide to close, because, you know, I have inventory, I have, yeah, so. Because, you know, I have inventory, I have, yeah. So, thank you for listening. And I didn't say, did I say my name? Nanette?
Yes.
Oh, thirteen sixty-eight Porlier Street. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. A question from Alder Stevens?
I have a question for you. Did the city notify you, or is it a tenant, that this was happening?
No.
No.
A client accidentally, was asking me for an appointment, and mentioned that she knew about it, heard about it, and she said, "Are you retiring, or what are you doing?" I have no idea what you're talking about. No, we were just informed. And it took two weeks after I contacted the landlord him to let us know that he had gotten accepted off for us.
That's certainly a fair question, Alder Stevens, but I think staff might want to weigh in just to describe how these things are noticed and why that might not have happened. So either Director Stechschulte or Mr. Buck?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, our certainly, city policy is certainly to notify the owners, and then notifying the owners of properties within usually a fixed distance around for a request for a rezoning. Oftentimes, we don't have the tenant information specifically, so it certainly would be difficult for us to do. And it certainly, at least in our restaurant, would hope it would be the responsibility of certainly the building owner to be communicating such things to their tenants. So we certainly, you know, understand the frustration of the folks who are here tonight, absolutely. But unfortunately, there's usually not information that is readily available to us, so.
Okay. Yeah, Alder Stevens?
So, looking at the map here, we're seeing three lots. Are they planning on tearing down the entire building for that second lot? Or force on the building to stay?
Well, so I guess the first thing that I want to point out, this is not a request for a car wash. It's a request for a rezoning of that corner piece. So they want to rezone it to a C2, which is an auto, and then their intention is to build a car wash. So that's the first thing I want to point, because they're just doing the zoning. What they do plan to do is, I believe, remove the entire building, split the lot into three separate lots, put a roadway through, and then, I believe, ultimately, build two other strip centers in that location as well. So, and I guess to kind of address that, I mean, it's the plan commission's policy to send out letters. It's not required by statute, it's not required by council. It's the plan commission that makes that determination. They do send out letters, but we only have owner information. We don't, there is no record of tenant information anywhere. So even when we send it out, like at a neighborhood, we have records of the land ownership. We don't know who's living in the units. So it would be very infeasible for us to be able to notify tenants. And again, I don't remember who said it, but we would like to think that the property owner is notifying his tenants, if, I guess that's his choice, though, as a property owner.
You know what, he might tear the building down?
No.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything as far as Dee's.
Well, and again, this is a request for rezoning. He may not ever take the building down, for all I know. But, you know, the thought process is, if he's coming in for the zone change, it's probably imminent.
We have one more resident testify. You want to hold questions until the last?
Sure.
Ma'am, you want?
Hi, my name is Heidi Theria, and my address is two three four seven Elbon Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five four three one one. And I own Electrify Nutrition in the strip mall, and I've been there almost five years. I serve healthy meals, and there isn't anything like me on the east side at all. I get a lot of customers from the Luxembourg area that are coming in to work to Green Bay. We service the police officers, we service a lot of the jail, the VA. I mean, it's crazy, but we also serve a lot of teenagers. Teenagers can't go a lot of places. They're, it's... I've grown very close to a lot of these kids. I've watched them grow up. And it's very hard to see something like this possibly end. And I'm just here to speak my piece and say that we were completely blindsided. And I don't know what else we would do for this. You know, we don't have other plans. We don't have other buildings that we're gonna move into. This is it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions for our guests? Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Have you received any communication at all from your landlord?
No. What he told me when I text him, he said that everything was confidential.
Use the mic, ma'am.
He said that everything was confidential, and that he couldn't tell us anything at this time.
Okay.
I actually spoke with him.
Okay.
And he told us that, or he told me that if the developer were to renegar on his offer, he'd lose a hundred thousand dollars, and that he would honor our leases. My lease ends in June, so, and pretty much that's all he said, though. And that was just because I called him specifically.
Okay. For the rest of you, how soon do your leases end?
Mine is June also. A month to month right now.
Okay.
Mine was May.
May? So, I mean, if we were to deny the rezoning, I mean, technically, he could shut you all out within a couple of months. And I guess, you know, if we deny the rezoning, we're doing it so you folks can stay in business. But he can still do with his property as he wishes, which is kind of the difficult task for us here. Obviously, him being a little more forthright would have benefited you with the ability to start looking for other sites. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alder. Other questions? Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if any Director Ellenbecker could answer this. I was looking at, oh, we're still talking here, correct? Never mind.
Okay, any questions for our guests?
I just want to mention one other thing. Some of these businesses are not going to be able to move somewhere else because of their, what their facility needs to have, and the amount of money that they would have to spend to make that business applicable to their, to what they do. Especially the beauty shop. She did actually put money in to upgrade it also, so they all did. So they have money invested in these businesses, and so they're gonna be out of everything, so. Their livelihood, everything, so. Thank you.
Actually, I did have a question.
Okay, Alder, go ahead.
All right, I'll ask of you now. Like Alder Galvin mentioned, he stated that, you know, the owner could pull the rug regardless. And he doesn't sound like he was forthright with you with this type of information. So it's kind of like you're caught between a rock and a hard place on this. So you can see where the problem comes for us, you know, to, you know, I think we're sympathizing with you. We definitely understand that. But he might, you know, a couple of years, a year down the road, six months down the road, he might decide to go differently. And I'm just wondering if there is a plan B. Like you said, it doesn't sound like there is right now, because you just heard about this.
Everybody is scrambling.
So. Okay, that, I just wanted to get that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Wery?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. It was short notice and horrible situation. But who is the landlord? Who's the owner?
David Charles.
David Charles? Okay. I didn't see that anywhere in there. Maybe I missed it. And you would hope that part of his new development would be to include you in it, but the fact that he hasn't even talked to you...
He has a management company, Wheeler Properties. That's one of the sad things, too. Wheeler Properties takes care of it. They have done absolutely nothing. In the sixteen years I've been there, they haven't tried to rent out. I realize it was an investment, and he put it in, he bought it just before festival went in. That was very smart of him. He was, you know, he's making money on it. More than anything, I was kind of hoping to meet the new owner and maybe talk with them here. I see that that's not the case. I see now that it's more of a chain-type thing. I didn't realize that. But that was my hope tonight. That's why I came. Thank you.
Any other questions for our guests? Yes, Alder Campbell?
You said you've been there for how many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yes.
And what's the longest lease you ever held there?
Well, Robert Vander Tellen owned it when I first moved there, and we never had a lease. I mean, we had a month-to-month. He didn't. He didn't write up a lease. When the new owners bought it, I had a five-year lease, which ended, I believe, last year, May. And James Wheeler approached me and asked me if I wanted to renew the lease, and, which I did, but I didn't want an increase in my rent. And he said, "Well, if you don't want an increase, you can go month-to-month." And, I mean, at the time, I was like, "Oh, okay, I'll do that." Of course, I should have signed a couple-year lease.
Usually, the process there, in my doings with business over the years, being on both sides of the fence, as the owner and the lease are, you know, the longer usually you try to get something. I'm saying, if you're, if some of you people that are putting money in there, I would surely think that you would have invested in the time and for sure the know-how of everything that's going on, and maybe collaborated together, which it seems like you have. I feel really bad for you and unfortunate, but when he offered you a year-to-year lease, I'm sure there was a plan intact then, you know?
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure he didn't want me to sign a lease, and I think that anybody that wants to...
Especially when you're gonna put in ten thousand, or twenty, or fifty thousand dollars. I mean, ten thousand dollars isn't a lot to remodel something.
Well, it is for me. Ten to fifteen was a lot, and that was, you know, almost seven years ago. And I improved the business, which he agreed that I did, because I spoke to him, I called him, and when I found out about this. And, but, of course, you know.
I've had to move several times because of several things. And all I can say is I wish you all the best, no matter what happens. I would probably start looking for somewhere, and you know what? Sometimes it just ends up better that way. And it's probably the best wrong turn. Sometimes you can't control it, but you did have a chance to control it. That's unfortunate, but honestly, keep your head up and go forward. Everyone cares for business in our town, and, you know, if anyone can help out. I mean, there's a lot of available property out there. I know what the cost is there, but that also is in the demand of you guys. But remember, moving forward, that, you know, three years is pretty much a cross-your-fingers hopeful. You know, sometimes you can say six years, and how about a two-year opt-out? That way, you can negotiate both ways, you both have the option. That's just a suggestion. But I feel for you guys. It's an unfortunate situation.
Thanks, Alder.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before our guests leave the floor? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Burnett. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay. I mean, sorry.
The ayes have it, and the floor is closed. Just one point to make real quickly to our guests, you know, not knowing exactly how this is gonna play out. But obviously, we have an economic development, a community and economic development department that loves the idea of having small businesses in the city of Green Bay. And so, you know, Neil and his team will be more than happy to work directly with you to find alternative sites, if that's something that is necessary. We also have an executive director of a business improvement district on our council. I'm sure he would love some additional businesses in the district, and that's true of downtown Green Bay and military improvement district as well. So just wanted to make that point to you all publicly. So whatever we can do, if things transpire as, you know, we expect they might, we're here to help you. So with that, Alder Burnett, and then Alder Stoyer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for mentioning it. That was, one of the ideas that I had would be Director Stechschulte, with a lot of the grants and federal funds and different relocation accounts, we could potentially help them, because we want to keep businesses in Green Bay, especially long-established businesses. We got to remember, though, and my heart breaks for these folks, because they all seem like really good people, who are running really good businesses that are appreciated by their customers. But the issue before us is really is a rezoning. And it really is the right of a property owner to go through the rezoning practice. And quite frankly, we don't know the financial part of this equation for the property owner. Could be perhaps he's losing money at that property. We don't know. And it's a little uncomfortable, because we're making this decision, which is a little bit emotional, and I really feel for these people, but it's a rezoning. And the property owner, it is within their right to come before this body to rezone it for whatever best practice, best purpose that they have for that property. And again, we don't know that other side of the equation. It could be that the rent's too low. I don't know that. I'm just saying, I'm just suggesting some possibilities. So the question before us is a rezone, and then I would really hope if the vote passes that the director of economic development really works at these businesses to relocate them in Green Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Stoyer?
I was gonna ask Director Ellenbecker, I don't know if this is a little premature, but I was looking at the assessed value possibly of this new development versus what we're collecting now. Is there any way to give us a number on something like that? You know, the benefits of having what they're looking to get versus what we have there already? Is there anything, a thought?
Director Ellenbecker?
At this point, I don't have any information on what their intent is to build or how to develop.
Just speculating on something like that, but like I said, the owner, it's their prerogative to kind of go forward and do what they'd like, so that is the issue, so. All right, that's good. Thank you.
Alder, any other comments or questions? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to reiterate what Alder Burnett said, you know, unfortunately, we're not taking a vote right now on whether or not we want to keep these tenants in that property. In fact, it's not a point of privilege that this body has. And we're not even taking a vote on whether or not we want a car wash. It's a vote about rezoning, and is this an appropriate use for that particular piece? The planning commission has recommended, obviously, from going from general commercial to highway commercial, and based on what I've seen, it is an appropriate use. And even if this body were to take the vote to say, "No, we're not going to rezone", if the developer is already intent on doing something different there, they're going to find a different thing to do there. So I think our best option at this point is to have Director Stechschulte reach out. It's my understanding that there may still be some world-end business grants available, but I would get in touch with the Bay Lakes Regional Planning Commission on that ASAP, because those were spoken for, but then it seemed like some things loosened up. But then I would also just kind of point out is that this is the importance of leases. So if any of you had leases in place, you could dig your heels in and say, "No, I'm staying put." But as was, what was alluded to before, this might have been part of a plan years in the making, and it was intentional to have these leases expire when they did and not renew them. So I would just encourage those business owners, I really want to see your success in the city of Green Bay. That is so important, I think, to everybody sitting here. And so I know our staff will work with you, but really contemplate working with your legal team, with your accountants, on, you know, what an appropriate lease might look like in a new space. Because obviously, when you do have those lease rights, it does give you some ownership and say over what happens to that property in these situations.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions? Alder, Eric?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, and, you know, when we do hear stories like this, it is heart-wrenching. And I think that, honestly, morally and ethically, the landlord should have given them more notice. I grew up on the northeast side. My mom still lives there, so I pass by that particular piece. And you can ask my kids, I've commented on how it's half-empty half the time. So they do have vibrant businesses, and that's great. But I do, I can understand why that the owner would want to rezone, because it has been, I don't know if you call it low traffic, or with businesses in there, that it's been, it has been half-empty a lot of the time. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, there's reasons why the owner wants to do this, and I can see it. It's just too bad. And yes, like Alder Johnson said, of course, we want to encourage businesses, and so that would be great if the city would help them out with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. On to item nine. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Campbell. Item was pulled by Alder Hutchison. Alder, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a constituent who would like to say some words at this time regarding this.
Like to make a motion to open the floor, Alder Hutchison?
I'd like to make a motion to open the floor. Thank you.
Alder Hutchison makes motion to open the floor. That was seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open.
Thank you for opening the floor. I was a little afraid I might lose that vote. So I'm back. Some of you know me. My name is Jim Grezza. The address is three six six seven Finger Road. If you know the intersection, it's Grand... Road. If you know the intersection, it's Grandview and Finger. Finger's just a little bit north of Mason at that point. And we were here seven years ago, eight years ago, because there was a planned development going in north of us, 250 acres. And our objection wasn't that they were doing the development. Our objection was all the apartments and townhouses that were going in. But the council at that time passed it through, because it was really important, because they were gonna get all of this tax revenue. How much tax revenue are you getting from that property? There's a nursing home went in and nothing else. So, you know, that's the kind of thing we were...I'm here to oppose the rezoning and the addition or creation of the PUD for the industrial area across the street from my house. And the big concern I have is the way the process was. Comment was made about it's hard to deal with the city sometimes. The comment was made about these people didn't get notified. We didn't have any information about those people. Get in the car and drive over there, knock on the door, you would have been able to talk to the people. Whether you have to do that or not, I don't know. So, I'm gonna tell you what we went through. Hey, a letter dated April 1st was received from Dave Buck. The letter says, planning commission Zoom meeting is April 11th to rezone the property east of Grandview. It's on the other side of the street from us. Okay? We're R1. We live there. We're gonna rezone it to industrial on the other side. So, nothing in the letter said what was gonna happen. Didn't say what business, who was doing it, what ramifications there might be. So, I called Dave and asked a bunch of additional information, like I just said. His comment was, I can't give you that information. Okay? So, I didn't get it the letter, strike one. I didn't get it, phone conversation, strike two. So, I went to the Zoom meeting of planning commission, April 11th. When public comments were allowed, I again asked the question, what's, who's going in here? What kind of business are you talking about? I was told, we can't answer any of your questions. You're only here to comment. It was a little difficult to comment when you don't know what's going on, strike three. So, I commented, and I brought up the issue about, isn't development usually residential next to its multifamily, then commercial, then industrial? Okay? That was the question. The commission actually talked about that when they had their discussion. So, I said, who knows the answers to these questions? And I got no response, and I said, I'm pissed. At that point, I heard in a Zoom meeting, we don't have to listen to this, mute him. And three minutes wasn't enough. So, I was really upset. Now, my wife's in the same room with me, sitting in front of the same computer, and the commission says, does anybody else want to comment? Now, we're muted, right? So, we're waving hands and stuff, and we never were recognized. So, you can see the frustration that we're experiencing, you know, in what's going on. Let's see. So, during that meeting, there was a question about, did anybody call in for or against? And the answer was, yes, two were for and two were against. When I had to testify, I had to say who I was and what my address was, but these other people, you had no clue who they were, and they didn't have to give their name and address. So, things just don't seem right. We conclude that the meeting was already decided before the meeting was happening. So, on April 12th, oh, so then, during that meeting, Dave Buck was gonna give some additional information, and he said there was a planning authorization, planning authority meeting at five o'clock. I mean, it was at six o'clock. He showed a site plan, which showed that it was a pet food processor. Had I known that from the beginning, maybe I wouldn't even have gotten concerned about it. Okay? But we didn't know anything until that point. And there was a site plan with a building layout. So, this didn't happen yesterday or the day before. This has been in the works for a long time. And in fact, last year, the sewers went down Grandview, and then it connected going east on Finger Road. And I asked, why are you going east on Finger Road? And there were some houses that had septic systems that weren't functioning properly. So, I understood. But I saw a lateral go into this property. So, I'm gonna guess that last year, people in the city knew what was going on, and nobody's telling us. And I checked, and Dave Buck was nice enough to explain to me that there's no statutory requirement to notify people. Well, during our invocation today, the comment was made about doing what is right, not necessarily what's the statute. So, I asked Dave in an email a bunch of questions, and he was gracious enough to answer my questions. April 13th, I reviewed the plan commission recording to see, you know, what I had said that was so upsetting. I also looked at the recording from the, and I may not have this right, the planning authority committee, and they went into closed session. So, I have no idea what happened. They came out and made a motion. I now know who the owner is, or who the owner's gonna be. I guess the city's gonna sell it to him. I talked to Dave Buck and my new Alder person here, and that was helpful. I don't know if there's any DNR permits gonna be required for this business. I don't know if there's any EPA requirements gonna be. I don't know if there's an older problem. I don't know if there's gonna be a problem with lights shining into our house. I don't know anything about what's going on. And I think as a courtesy, the city could inform people that this kind of stuff is happening. I'm almost done. So, I'm gonna ask the city to do some things. You know, I've been criticized in this last seven years ago, that we didn't do our due diligence. Well, we asked the question, how is the property zoned around this? The person who gave us the answer maybe didn't have all the information, but they gave us the answer, and we trusted it. And so, if, you gotta train your employees in City Hall. If they don't know the answer, or they don't know the complete answer, so if I ask, is this property zoned R1, and they say, yes, but if there's a plan to change it next year, you gotta volunteer that. So, train the people to, so they know how to answer the question, and if they don't know the answer, tell them, this is who's gonna have the answer, or find out who's gonna have the answer. I beg you to do that. I mean, that's just common sense. One other sidebar. While I was doing this, I wanted to go to the campaign finance reports, okay? That page is garbage. There's no organization to how that stuff is listed on. I ask you to change that, and I'll tell you that the state has a system that you can do. It's a searchable database. I think the city should do the same thing. You want to have open government, let the public be able to find out what's going on. So, you need a searchable database, so I can look at a person in office and see who the people were contributing, or I can do a search on who contributed to which candidates. Now, that's not rocket science, so I'm asking that you take a look at that as well. And I'm gonna stop. I'm gonna ask you to consider that this way this is done is not any good. And the question that we had is, well, there's a lot of other areas. Why did this have to be built here? And why not, if you're gonna do this, why don't we move from residential to commercial to industrial? And we were told, well, that's not gonna work. Well, I think it does work. It works at a lot of places in the city. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Any questions for our guests? Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sir, sorry that your experience with the city was less than ideal, and hopefully, you know, it's uncomfortable here in criticism, but hopefully those in position to make a difference certainly do that, and that includes the city council. So, I'm a little confused. You're explaining the process, but are you in favor of this planned unit development overlay, or would you rather this be-
No, I'm not in favor, because I don't have enough information.
Okay.
And I was told that, well, the property that is in discussion here is because the city owns that, so the city could sell it. Well, that's not a good answer. You know, if the business doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. If the people need another place to build, there's all kinds of people selling property.
So, the public hearing was last week, and you stated that two members of the public spoke for, two spoke against. Is that-
No. They asked if anybody phoned in to, I think David took the calls, and he responded that there were two calls supporting the development and two against it.
So-
And the two that were for it, probably the same two that were for the development that's north of us. These are people, if I got it right, that own property on the south side of Mason Street, and they prefer the development, so if they can sell their property, okay, well, maybe they could have sold their property right away. The sewer system that went in, I don't know how far it went across Mason Street. It probably would have to be extended if somebody wanted to buy a property.
So-
So, my criticism is more to be constructive.
Sure.
I'm not here to point fingers at anybody. I'm here to say, yeah, maybe sometimes you gotta step back and see, how do we run the business? And everybody in this building is an employee of the taxpayer.
No, and I commend you for that. I mean, I know it can be uncomfortable, you're being recorded, you're criticizing government, but we should hear that, and I don't think you're out of order in any way whatsoever. I guess my question, though, is, now, there are large parcels of land out there, so obviously, there are a lot of people that may be for or against this, but perhaps the question is, did the city properly notify? No, we don't have a statutory requirement to notify, but it certainly would be good government to notify as much people as possible in a general area, especially when there are larger parcels of land that surround that, that, if it is a certain footage, like 200 feet or 400 feet, if it's a very large parcel of land, property owners being notified could be a very small number, but not the greater community that will be affected by traffic, property values situation. So, do you think, last question, I know I'm kind of being more commentary, but do you think that in your conversations with neighbors and people on your side of town, that there'd be more people against this had they been notified of the public meeting?
Well, when we, when the Grandview, and this was kind of a weird, they did a traditional urban development, and they identified this as, this is the way things used to be back in colonial days, and I thought, what's that got to do with today? You know, we're not doing horse and buggy. And they ended up changing it. We got signatures in a petition, and I understand that the petition process is no longer valid all around the property. You know, people were against it. I understand them being against it, because they live there, they like the serenity, and, but progress is gonna happen. My concern with it was more in terms of how they said, we're gonna have all of these apartments and all of these townhouses and all these palats. And to give you one anecdote to that, there's a property owner on Grandview, on the east side of Grandview, right across where the apartments would go, and they were opposed to the apartments. These people are apartment owners, so they understand, you know, what you deal with when you have people who have no vested interest in the property, and that's why they were opposed to it as well. So, there's not a lot of people living out there, but there is one lady on Grandview, and her property is gonna be surrounded by these two developments. And she asked the developer, or the owner on the bigger project, if they would buy it from her, and they said, well, we'll pay you the price, the value of the land, but not your house. So, she's stuck. And there's another guy on the other side of Grandview, they put commercial property all around his house.
I don't want to hog your time, but thank you for speaking. No other questions here?
Thanks, Alder. Any other questions for our guests? Hang on. Motion to close the floor? Oh, you need one to testify as well?
My name is Jackie Grezza. I am Jim's wife. 3667 Finger Road in Green Bay, talking about, I guess, the way the city has treated us all since we've been here. We moved back to, we lived in Clintonville for many years. When we retired, we wanted to live close to our kids. Our kids both lived in Green Bay area at that time. We wanted a bigger parcel of land. There was a piece of land for sale by owner. We went to two different realtors to ask them if they could help us to know all the right way to do things. Both of them denied helping us. We went to a lawyer, how do you do this correctly? And we thought we had a good lawyer. Apparently, we did not. We went to the city of Green Bay, how is this land zoned? We were told that maybe someday this will be a single-family residential area. Well, we know that this happens. There is a pretty subdivision, it's called the Preserve, off of Huron, I believe, and Erie Road area. They have very nice homes. If they would have wanted to build something like that around us, we would have had no problem, and we would have totally understood. We don't, at the time, we have two acres between our house and the neighbors. That was considered commercial. Our bedroom is on that side of the house, on the west side of the house. Who wants bright lights shining in your house, in your kitchen, or anything in the middle of the night? Then Tina was good enough to have that rezoned, a single-family residential. But I guess, when we, we were told by the then-city planner and her assistant, Dan, that we would need a petition, we went and we had the petition. We had, my husband had just had shoulder surgery. It was very hard. It was winter, and we went door-to-door begging people or informing them what was going on, saying, please, you know, do you want this? Nobody wanted commercial apartments and all of that going in behind us. So, we had the petition, and we presented it to city council. One person voted in our favor, who is no longer our alderman. So, when you were told, our new Alder Lady was told that the city is hard to deal with for the communities around us, it is also hard to deal with for our citizens. When I say I am very sorry that we moved to Green Bay, we could have lived in other communities around us to be close to our kids. I am sorry because that we moved here. We have five acres, and we're trying to make this our home. So, we're not about to sell it today or tomorrow. Probably when one of us dies, the other one will sell it. But it's, it's just, it's just a very sad situation to know that, here you are, and you're not listened to, you're told your opinions don't matter, we're gonna do what we want to do. So, I am, I guess I'm just speaking my mind right now. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony, ma'am. Any questions for our guests?
I have one comment.
Yeah, Alder Hutchison?
Yes. I got involved with this last week. It's one of the first calls I got, and I appreciate it. What I've seen, though, is grace on your part and how you communicated with me. I've seen you ask questions of staff, and I've seen their immediate answers. Okay? So, I know what you went through when you first heard of this. My experience has been the staff in the last five days, the staff work has been, I think, meeting your expectation, because it met mine. When I had questions, you got immediate responses from the-
David Buck, yes. David Buck returned my call. He has returned my husband's calls and emails. He has been very gracious.
Okay. Well, I would hope that we would continue that type of dialogue forward and learn from what you're talking about, so we don't try to do that again. Okay? That scenario where you don't know anything going into an important meeting, because I think it could have been handled differently. So, my hope is, going forward, we establish a new rut to get into, which is a lot better rut.
Yeah, that's my first point, and I know that if I stand up here and do everything that I can think of, that it's not gonna change what you guys are gonna do. I know that. But I'm trying to let you know what the other side is gonna, is going through, and it doesn't have to be that way. Customer service, everybody in this building ought to be working on customer service, and it doesn't have to be statutory.
Right.
And I don't know if this is just me, but I, and this goes back to the other administration of years. I understand that there's a lot of people, citizens, come into this building, and they're ticked off, and the poor employee here gets the brash of that. They get right between the eyes, bang. So, my suggestion, I wasn't gonna say this, but I'm gonna say it, my suggestion is you give them training to know how to deal with people like me, so that they can go home at night and feel good about doing their job. Because when I come in here, even now, there seems to be, you know, everybody's waiting for the bombs to drop, and people ought to be enjoying their life. They ought to be happy, you know, see somebody, how you doing? And it just seems that there's tension in the air, and there shouldn't be.
Thank you, sir. Any other-
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
At the meeting on April 11th, we were- Um, at the meeting on April 11th, we were sent maybe two pieces of paper telling us about this meeting. Um, David, at the Zoom meeting, kept on talking, well, you have this information in your packet that you received. We did not receive any thick packet of information. Maybe if we had gotten that, Jim would have had his questions answered that he tried to ask at the Zoom meeting, and he was told he was not allowed to ask the question. So.
Then I was muted.
Yeah.
Then I was muted.
So.
That's why I'm glad you're, you're a person here, cause you can mute me all you want. Thanks for listening. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks so much for being here.
And I congratulated our new alderman. I said, but do you know what you're getting into? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Entertaining motion to close the floor?
Can I have a question? Can I ask them a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, so the, you had said you got a couple pieces of paper regarding the hearing. Um, how many people were in the, sorry if you said that, I just clarifying. How many homeowners were at the hearing?
It was a Zoom meeting. I don't know. I, I know that there was the lady on Grand View that I said she wanted to sell her property. I know she was there. But, and a lot of the people don't use the video, so they have a name. I don't know. This is, it, it, you know, in the documentation, they're right. This is a low-density residential area. Because we sit on the corner, there is, if you go north on Grand View, there's a lady on the east side, there's a man on the west side. And then you gotta go up further before you hit a little cluster of homes. And on Finger Road, if you go from the intersection, you go west, you get our property. South of Finger, across from us is another residential area. Then there's a vacant lot, then there's another residential area. And until you get to about Pearly Gates, I don't know.
So you have no idea if they were all represented?
I don't know. Go to the town, so you wouldn't know, but that's, that's the best part. And then you get more residential area.
And I don't think that very many people were notified, because weren't we told that only people within 400 feet of the development had to be notified? So maybe the people who live in that area were totally unaware of what was happening that night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congress, do you have a question?
He was asking where you lived and map, and I was.
Well, I, I was just double checking it.
With the square around it?
No, it's over here.
Oh.
Okay, we have somebody else who'd like to testify?
So, um, Poly Razor, 419 East La Cappen Circle, so I'm in this district. Um, and I, I saw it on the packet agenda. My, my concerns just personally was the 400-foot notice, I think, for the size. The 375 acres that they're speaking of, the size and scope of the project, and the density of the population. I just think that potentially 400 feet certainly, I don't know, is the right distance for this type of, um, building and what they're looking to put in, and the number of acres. My other concern is if the Green Bay Public Schools has been, um, is on board with this. I know that their proposed fifth high school is down, you know, down the street from this. I'm not sure if this works in unison with their plans were. I think that, um, that from, from me as a, a taxpayer, concerned citizen, that's the two, you know, comments I wanted to make about it. This might be the best thing that ever happened to Green Bay. This might be the worst thing that ever happened. I don't know that I have an opinion on it. I just think that there's, um, people that, you know, maybe should be notified, and I think the, what the plan for the public schools, I would just want them to be on board, yea or nay, or have some say in, in, you know, and I'm not sure if they were involved in the project or decisions or anything like that. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the floor is closed. Uh, so we have Alder Johnson first in the queue, it looks like.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, I wanna thank those that, that spoke and, and shared your perspective, and I think, you know, were hopefully a very humble body that is receptive to hearing that feedback and recognizing where improvements can be made. And, um, and I trust that, uh, the mayor working with staff will, will kind of digest that and, and respond accordingly. And, and one of the things I think that we become so enamored in, and, and so used and entrenched, I guess, in typical process that sometimes we forget what it's like for the average citizen to experience their government. And, and in this particular instance, um, I think what, what hasn't been brought up thus far is that there will be an opportunity for the general public to understand what's going to happen here, uh, before a final vote is taken. And so this is property that is currently owned by the city, so before the city can sell it, that will be a public process. Uh, I'm assuming, uh, well, and I think it perhaps has been shared, a development agreement would likely, uh, come forward with this particular project. Again, that would be a very public process. Uh, the details of that project would be shared. Um, depending on, uh, the nature and the terms and what's all included in that development agreement, uh, the school district would have uh, the opportunity to weigh in on that, um, publicly and perhaps by vote, uh, if, if public assistance is involved, because that would be a joint review board discussion. Um, so, so there's definitely gonna be those opportunities. But again, the, the, I appreciate that most people in the, in, in, in the average public wouldn't understand sort of all those steps that occur. And, and, uh, to use sort of the, the acronym, or excuse me, not the acronyms, um, the expression earlier, I, I think the cart might be before the horse here. And really what's before us again today is rezoning. And whether or not, uh, when we look at this particular parcel, um, if rezoning to this use is appropriate for that area. So, so, and there will be an opportunity and time for us to talk about the particular development and its impact on that area. Um, but before we get there, I, I do want to, Director Sexulty, um, if you could perhaps weigh in, uh, and, and if you wanted to defer to Mr. Buck, by all means, however you guys wanna handle that. Uh, but I've been a member of the Economic Development Authority for a number of years, uh, and we've been, um, working on a plan for a number of years on that area, uh, targeting, uh, the expansion of industrial development. Uh, so if you could perhaps, uh, to help new members of council in particular, but maybe even some existing members that aren't fully aware, kind of what's been done there to kind of lay the groundwork for future use?
I think I'll just, I'll take a start, and then I'll count on Mr. Buck to correct me if I miss anything incorrectly. So the, as we kind of had, had prior discussions regarding the city's comprehensive plan, this area has been identified as, as, as prospective expansion of, of the city's industrial areas. Uh, this for, so, so since 2003, there has been policies, at least maps, identifying this area as potential uh, for this type of, of reuse. Uh, so to, to, to be clear, the current zoning that is in place is a residential, a low-density residential zoning in this area. And that is not unusual for more undeveloped areas. Uh, for those areas to probably gonna be the more, usually the more restrictive zoning classifications until future development does occur. So that is not an unusual situation. Um, you know, certainly related to the last several years, I think staff has had several meetings with landowners in this area. And I just, did want also make a note that, um, actually, Mr. Buck, certainly we did, the 400-foot rule was certainly, uh, applied, but then also other, other owners, it really, in the entire industrial park area that has been planned and mapped, also received notification of this. So I think we had 37, I think, letters actually ended up, did going out to this particular area. So we did, staff actually did take a little bit larger look at this for, for some of the reasons and concerns that were identified. So a lot of those conversations have been, um, you know, kind of perspective on, you know, what it might take for this area to be, to become uh, this, this type of, this sort of use. There have been meetings with owners, so at least two or three occasions in the last several years. Um, this essentially has been kind of brought forward as the first rezoning and the step of, kind of the first phase of what that future park would end up be, becoming. Uh, so this was kind of our first run in terms of establishing the zoning for this particular area. Uh, Mr. Buck has been contacted, I think, by several of the owners in the area, asking when they can make that request for zoning to be applied, the same type of zoning to be applied. And, uh, just I guess one last note, that we didn't want to simply just rezone this to an industrial use. Our existing industrial zoning classification is certainly, is less restrictive than what is currently in the planned unit development in your packet. Uh, staff has gone out of their way essentially to, uh, increase the buffer sizes, add landscaping, and add certainly architectural elements to this particular, uh, types of use to kind of make that, understanding that the types of uses that it may be in proximity to may have, there may be more impact to that. So the reason it is a planned unit development is for some of those, to try to address some of those specific concerns.
Great. And, and I appreciate that additional clarity, because of course, that, that is the opportunity that we have, like you said, to, to, to minimize some of that impact. And just in the spirit of maybe over-communicating to the residents that have spoke here, um, development agreements generally would not require an additional notification by the city or, or would even trigger that. So, um, so obviously, we, we have a vote to take here tonight in terms of what happens with zoning, but if, but if that were to pass, uh, I would presume a development agreement would then be the next step. And so maybe just kind of a flag to, to those folks that are interested in paying attention to this. Um, you know, to maybe continue to communicate with city staff so that they can let you know when that item's gonna come on an agenda. And then all of those details would be publicly shared, at which point you would have the opportunity to really share your concerns about specifics of the project. Ask your questions, get them answered.
I think, if I could just add one more thing, it's, and actually knowing right now, I think the intent is to bring that together, uh, at the, at the May 3rd meeting right now. So as soon as that packet would be available, we'd be happy to share it with the Gretzkis, so they can, we'll just notify them directly of when that's available. So.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, we've got a few in the queue. Alder Grant?
Um, I apologize if this is the wrong time to bring this up, but is this, if we're hearing that notification as a request, can we motion, I know it's part of the plan to notify people, but can we make a motion for a certain distance being notified? Or is that too premature?
I don't think that would be something that, that we could do. Attorney Bunker?
If you could just explain exactly what you're asking, so that I can.
Yep, so 400 feet of residents were notified. That's only, that was only 37 people. So we're worried about the size of the parcels. Can we broaden that to, I don't know, 800 feet or whatever, to get a good, good feedback from our residents before we truly look into this?
I think our Director Sexulty was actually saying the.
Just, just to clarify, Alder Grant? The 37 people was actually the larger area beyond just the 400 feet. If it was 400 feet from the property, we probably would have had three, three or four notices. So, so this was, just to be clear, that that expanded area was, we got to 37 by taking a much larger area that we were referring to, in terms of kind of what's been identified as, as the future industrial park in our planning documents. Just to be clear. So.
So my understanding is that, that notice required, or that notice courtesy, or that notice action is something that Plan Commission does by its own rules? So I feel, I think the proper way of going about it would be, um, a request or a communication for Plan Commission to change that, um, that 400-foot rule to something bigger, or at least to look into that, um, rule that they have to see if that can be changed for the future. That makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Eck?
Yeah, I, um.
I was trying to look to see if the answer was in the packet, and I missed it maybe. Out of the 37 letters that went out, I was just wondering what the response was, positive and negative.
Mr. Buck?
Okay, well, like I had said, so what, uh, um, what was referenced by the, the speaker was that there were four people that contacted the city prior to the Plan Commission report being drafted. So there were two against, two in favor. Uh, one of the against was the Gretzkis. Two of the in favor were landowners to the south. Um, the other owner did not want to provide, uh, information. So the people that speak at the Plan Commissioner, it's a public hearing. So they had the public hearing at the Plan Commission. Um, so I can't, I can tell you that we've been meeting with the owners of the expanded, uh, the potential industrial park, uh, for four years. So we've met with them out at the woods, uh, about four times. We've conducted wetland delineations. We've shared that with them. So we didn't get a lot of calls, but most of those property owners out there have been notified for years. So I don't believe this is much of a surprise to them. Um, but beyond those four, uh, that I speak of, those are the only communications I've had with any owners.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, Alder Scannell?
I, I unmuted myself, cause, uh, Director Sexulty, um, answered my question. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, it seemed odd that we're having an industrial, um, zoning right next to housing, residential, and, but this is more restrictive, and they're taking, and they're gonna be taking in landscaping and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, that was my concern.
Got it. Thanks, Alder.
Thank you. Well done.
Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I think we're all, can appreciate where a new alder, or several alders in this case, can feel conflicted on a situation like this, because, you know, newly elected, previous council had, they were not yet sworn in when this was discussed, and now you have citizens come forward expressing concern. And it's very typical and common and commendable, quite frankly, to want to allow additional public input before a project moves forward. Um, I also have concerns in the past in my district with lack of notification. And, and there's good reason to not be able to notify everyone about everything happening in their neighborhood. Particularly my issue in my district with, uh, uh, land going into trust with O'Nida Properties. My intent at that time was to expand the notice, or at least notify people so they know who to contact with different properties and who the jurisdiction is. So it's a, what I would just ask before we go ahead and vote for this, is just to clarify that this will then be a first reading later on in the agenda, the order. So it, it will have to be read a second time. That'll be May 3rd, right? Director, um, I'll, I'll vote for the motion, but could you work with the alders to see if there's another public information session or something that they can provide, whether it be like, is if there's a neighborhood association, if there's just something the alders can do to feel better about voting for this two weeks from now, if that's what they decide to do? Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been approved. On to report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Apologies, I skipped the Finance Committee. Uh, report of the Finance Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Finance Committee report has been adopted. Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any items here to be handled separately?
Two.
Item two. Any others? All right, hearing no others. Item two will be handled separately. All in favor of the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved, with the exception of item two.
Second?
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Alder Johnson, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This was the item that I had, uh, I guess started to, uh, discuss during appointments and felt it'd be more appropriate to bring it up here. Um, I, I certainly appreciate, um, the value that, that this particular position would, would bring to the commission. Uh, I'm curious if, um, if we've ever considered, I guess, appointing this as an ex officio role? Um, and, and I guess, uh, from a legal perspect, maybe, perhaps I would ask Director Grenier if that's ever been considered. And then secondly, uh, with Attorney Bunker, if that were a desire, what, what we would have to do to create that role?
Okay. Good question. Uh, Director Grenier?
I don't know that that has necessarily been considered. I think it's an interesting idea. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and, and speak a little bit on Attorney Bunker's behalf. Uh, what it would require would be an amendment to the bylaws that constitute the Traffic Bike and Pet Commission. Uh, I know that because they, they recently updated their bylaws, uh, last year. Um, in speaking with the traffic engineer on behalf of what happened at the meeting, um, they do understand that there is somewhat of an inconsistency between the individual being appointed and, and the direction that the, that the commission requested. Um, in general terms, they're okay with it, knowing that their desire has been expressed and that there would be an intent to do that on a future, uh, at such time that a, uh, that a, a position would open up again on the commission, as long as that, that recommendation or their desire, uh, be considered at that point in time, I think, uh, I think the Traffic Bike and Pet Commission, uh, would be okay with moving forward as, uh, as has been discussed earlier tonight.
So do the, do the bylaws of, of this commission determine how many members are appointed to it?
Member numbers, terms, distribution. So to consider an ex officio, I think, would be, uh, a communication in that regard to, uh, consider amendment of the by, uh, the bylaws. To consider that type of an appointment, I think would definitely be appropriate. Uh, that's something that upon receipt, uh, Department of Public Works would then immediately consult with Law Department to, uh, to see if that's something that we could implement. to, to see if that's something that we could implement.
Okay, so to our knowledge, and maybe this is an Attorney Bunker question, I mean, is this, is this in our charter ordinance at all that dictates, I guess, how appointments, quantity, any of that? Is that defined in our charter ordinances for any commission?
Attorney Bunker?
Our ordinance, our ordinances generally provide for each, for each board commission different compositions, different appointments, terms, start dates, things like that. So it all depends on, on the board that we're talking, we're talking, speaking of.
Okay.
Specific.
Okay. And I don't need to take any more time with it here. I think, you know, I'll go that communication route, and I'll talk with, who is the chair of the commission now?
Anthony.
Anthony, no. Okay, so I'll talk with Dan, just to see kind of what he, what he thinks of that. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? None? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That item has been approved. Report of the Protection and Policy Committee.
Approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately?
Two.
All right. Hearing no, none others. All in favor of the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved, the exception of item two.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve item two made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, pulled by Alder Steyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're talking about customer service here. I was looking at this meeting today, and it would have been nice to have this gentleman come up earlier in the meeting. That's another story.
You can always amend the agenda.
Yes, I know that. I know that. But anyway, Mr. Charles is here. Our Protection and Policy Committee met several times. One time he couldn't make it, another time there was some problems with the technology. So he is here right now to speak on his behalf, so I would make a motion, open the floor.
Second.
Motion to open the floor made by Alder Steyer, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. Sir, if you could just approach the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Kevin Charles. My address is 1129 Applewood Drive. I guess I'm here to ask you to not deny my liquor license. I, this is the first I do of when I got this letter. This property on University, we're working on remodeling it. We're trying to make it more of a, you know, a restaurant, not, not like a rock bar or anything like that, kind of back like it used to be, Pepper Mill Days and stuff. I had gotten this letter, so throughout all this, the meeting process and stuff, I never got a letter about the meeting. But what I'd had done, and I'd applied for license, and then I was dealing with building permits and plans and all this other stuff. So I'd kind of forgot about, you know, kind of forgot about the process of the license. So I had been down here, up dealing with the, the building department, and I stopped down by the city clerk, and I'd asked him, what's going on my license? And at that point, I had been directed to call Mr. Steyer here. And he said there was a meeting, and, you know, I really didn't need to show up, or, you know, if I did know I had to have been there, I would have been at every meeting. And then, you know, I guess at that point it was Zoom, so, you know, I never Zoomed meeting before. So there are, you know, they, they state what happened here. So in 2012, there had been a, serving a minor, and then there had been an intoxicated person. But after that, you know, I've had six consecutive licenses after that. I own another place in Green Bay where, you know, some of these issues had happened. There in 2013, they had a unlicensed bartender, which at that point I thought I put in, you know, standards with my management, you know, that this wouldn't happen again. Well, in 2018, it happened. So at this point, I've made a lot of, I'm older now, I'm 50 years old. So I made a lot of different changes in the way I do business. So like licensing, I handle all that. I make sure they got that, you know. So I, I was never trying to do anything wrong. It's just, you know, I don't know, combined years, I've been in this business 29 years. And these combined places, you know, you're, you're looking at 21 years of business, and I, there's four things on this sheet that, you know, happened, but what do you do, you know? You gotta, you gotta try to fix the problem when you have a problem. So anybody got any questions for me?
Any questions from council? Alder Galvin and Alder Stevens?
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate you coming down to discuss this issue with us. You've been operating bars for 29 years?
29 years, yep.
And you've operated them as, like, the owner or as the manager?
Well, I've, so The Getaway on Bellevue Street, me and my dad and my brother had owned. And quite some time ago, I had left that, and I purchased, I own one out by Dykesville, which I had run. And then I bought Hammerin' in Green Bay. I own the Chatter House in Deep Pier. I've owned this property for, I've been at this property for, on University for 11 years. I ran it for eight and a half years, and we had, we'd leased it out three and a half years ago. And it was, it was some guys that had worked for me, and I had somebody else that approached me, they were interested, and then they're like, well, lease it to us, and whatever. So they had actually had, they had had more on their lease, but, you know, through the COVID and stuff, they, we got to a point, they said they're not going to make it anymore. So I'd let them, you know, I did, I let them out of their lease, and I'm like, so here I sit, I put the property on the, you know, I think, well, I'll put it on the market, you know, well, that, it was on there for a month. And then I thought, well, I'm gonna, you know, I've noticed University, they're, they, they need a nice place over there. They need a nice bar, restaurant, you know, kind of, I own the Chatter House, kind of like around over there. So I've got a lot of money, and it looks nice, you know. We're expanding, you know, that was where the building permit came in, to try to expand the kitchen, to make it more, you know, more food oriented. Because the older I get, you know, my bars are closed at nine, 10 o'clock at night nowadays, you know, I'm, I'm not about the kids sitting there all night long, or any of that stuff, you know, about people coming to have a couple of drinks and maybe a plate of food.
So, but what I'm asking you, sir, is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Have you operated those bars as the manager-owner for 29 years?
Yes.
Okay. Have you owned more than one bar at a time?
Yes, I have.
Have you ever had any other violations in any other jurisdictions?
I have, yeah.
And what were those for, sir?
Well, what did I have? I don't, actually, no, I didn't have a violation.
So when you were operating the bar, you, there were no violations at those bars?
Yeah.
Officers never entered and made, issued tickets or anything to anybody for underage drinking, unlicensed person on premises, over-serving, disearly housed, nothing like that?
Not at, not at the bars. I've had, I've had employees get tickets, you know, I had, they got caught on stings.
Oh, okay. So that's under your watch, though?
Yeah, well...
Okay. I mean, it's not you getting the ticket, but when you're responsible for the bar...
There was probably a couple over the years, you know.
Okay.
But nothing that I was cited for.
But, but, right, but you don't remember that?
No.
But you think it happened, but you're not sure?
Well, I, I, I don't think I got cited.
Well, no, and I'm not asking that.
That's who I was asking if I got cited.
When you're responsible for an establishment, you're responsible for everything that...
I, I know, I'm responsible for everything, but you, you can't be there and looking over their shoulder at all times. It's, you know, you, and right now, so I'm at a point in my life where I got people I trust, and there, there are team members that have been there for a while, you know, you've...
Okay, you understand that if, if this license is granted to you, you can do anything you want with that bar?
Oh, no.
I mean, you're telling us right now you're going to close at 9 o'clock, or...
Well, I'm not saying it'll always be closed, but I'm not a, you know, my concept is not to be an all, all give or hack type of place, you know.
Right. But if it turns into that, what, what are we to do?
Well, then...
I mean, you have the right to do that. Once you, once the city issues you that license, that's your license. You can stay open till the bar closing any night. You could have lounge bands there. You could have, you know, you could have a totally different thing of what you're describing to us.
Yeah, I guess I could.
All right. Because you're asking us to trust you and issue this license.
Yes, I am.
Okay, and that's why I'm asking you, you're talking about these four violations here, but that's why I'm asking you about your other establishments. What has happened at those? And you kind of remember that there were violations?
Well, it had, yeah, well, there was probably five, six years ago, had a, I had a bartender get a ticket for serving a person on a sting, and then I had an unlicensed bartender. That, that's all I can remember. But back in the old, I don't remember anything ever happening prior to that. But, you know, I'm looking at my sheet here, what, you know, what they have listed.
Right, right. And we don't have the information here. It would have been nice if we had had the information here that, did you, did you...
But I don't, I don't even think I got cited in them, though. There was other people that got cited.
The other people would.
Yeah.
But it's still your responsibility.
Yeah.
So what I'm asking you is, with this application, did you meet with the police officers and people?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Did you sign everything? Did you agree to everything?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And we don't have that, that form with us. And I would ask in the future, when these things come before us, that we have all those forms with us. So you agreed to have the, the video camera in there?
Yes, I did.
And, and the ID scanner?
Yep.
And, and everything else?
Everything else.
Okay. And also sober...
Sober bartenders.
Sober bartenders that are not allowed to drink at all?
Yep. Not allowed to drink at all.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Stevens?
Mine would be for inspections. He stated he's doing work in that building.
So what's your question, Alder Stevens?
Yeah, sure. You stated that you're doing work inside that building?
Yes.
Has inspections been involved with you?
Yes, they, well, you mean the inspections, like the plumbing and the...
Correct, yes.
They, we haven't got to that point, because we're, we're building. So we've got, they actually just came through and did the electrical roughen inspection today. And then the building inspector had been there, like, I think, last week or the week before, to do the rough framing. So we never, we never got to all the mother steps of the, the plumbing inspector and the other, well, the, I'm sure the electrical and building inspector will, when they sign off these permits, they'll, they'll be through that.
So the building hasn't been approved yet?
No, well, it's not approved yet.
Okay. And when do you plan on opening?
I was hoping May sometime, end of May. We're about a couple of weeks from finishing.
Sure.
So...
You know, I'm on protection and policy, and I did not at the first time, so...
Yes.
I thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, and I, I would have been, if I knew I had to be there, I would have, you know, as I said, I don't know how to Zoom, but I would have had my kid get me there or something, but I, I just didn't, after talking with Mr. Shore, he, you know, he said you don't really have to be there, but I wish I would have been.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Eck and then Alder Campbell?
Mr. Charles, what is the percentage of food versus alcohol that you're going to be serving?
I would imagine you're going to be 60% food, 40% alcohol.
So it's a restaurant?
Yeah. That's kind of what I'm at right now, you know, with the Chatter House, well, 60, 40 split, I think.
Okay. But you're, a lot of your focus is on the food?
Yes.
That's something new versus the last time?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we always, we always did food, but it's, you know, I'm, I'm expanding it to make more dining, you know, like, you know, a haystack, we did enough food, but it was always, you know, there was two pool tables and this and that. Well, I, I'm trying to get, fill that room with tables so that, you know, them dinner hours, people can come in and eat, and, you know, more, more of a dining establishment than it used to be.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Campbell?
So I've been to the property yesterday. Electrician was there, I stepped in. He gave me his number. I've known Kevin. I used to belong to the Tavern League for many years and a couple of other counties. So I can understand, you know, the things that you go through with a bar. I mean, I, I ran a great bar, and the police always supported me. We always ran it good. I mean, you can't always pick your crowd. I think Kevin is trying to do that. I've known him over the years. I've stepped in the property, he told me, and I will vouch that he called Mr. Steyer, and I understood, and I think he was sincere about it. I know there's a lot of struggles with moratoriums and everything that I've gone through over the years, and I, I, this is one of the reasons that I got involved here, because I, I know people on the committee right now that gave me a chance, and, and I proved them right. And I, I, I grace the opportunity to give Mr. Charles a, a chance. I think he's sincere. Again, we've all grown. We've all had that, but, you know, I think you can control, and, and first thing I told him was, you know, the Chatter House, and then he acknowledged that. I remember when it was the Pepper Mill, I think, and they had the, like, the best pizza burger in town. And when the owner then bought it, they tore the kitchen out of there. And I was like, wow, that was a mistake, you know? And he's trying to bring that back. University Avenue does, doesn't, doesn't have enough.
Your Honor, I mean, should just be questions now? Speaking would come after. So if, I mean...
I understand that.
Okay, I just...
So...
Right now, should it just be...
Since the floor, yeah, I mean, Alder Scannell's just making the point that since the floor is open, we should kind of focus on the, on the guest before us.
If you have a question.
But the floor is yours, Alder Campbell.
So, again, I, I've stepped in there. I guess the question is, when are you, you planning to open?
I was hoping middle of May, end of May.
Yeah. And I would probably agree that the, the, the amount of flow of food is, is probably what he wants to do.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Scannell and then Alder Johnson?
Just one question about the 2018 unlicensed. You said that was because of, you owned the place, but you had someone manage it, and it was the manager who...
Well, what, I own the Hammerin', and I do have, so in 2013, we'd had...
I don't care about that one.
Okay, 2018. So we'd had, I had had, you know, I had two employees, which I thought were licensed, which my managed, you know, the lady was managing, said were licensed. So one for sure was working, whose name is Joe Charlie, or which still works there. And I had just recently, you know, in like, weeks before, I'd seen his provisional license. Well, he ended up getting denied, so at that point, he wasn't licensed, and I never got the information, he had got denied. But he had actually come to council and got over the, got through the issues, and they issued him a license now. So at that point, I didn't, I didn't know. I thought there was a licensed persons working, but there wasn't.
So it was, he was denied, and, and before he was able to appeal it, he was dinged for serving unlicensed?
Yeah. Well, he wasn't, he wasn't even the one dinged. It was some other, some other girl, the other bartender girl, but, but he was on, on premise, so there was never a concern. So now, after that, I got a program where I see all the licenses. So I got a, I got a book at home, and I know who's due what. So I got two of them that are due this year, and they got to go get them done. And I don't, I don't let people come to work unless, so I don't even let them start training or anything until they go buy, get a license.
Okay. And so the manager, is the manager still with you?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
She'd been there since, she's been here for 13 years, and it was something we'd worked out, and that's where I'd taken, you know, I'd put in more, you know, ground rules. I'm like, yes, you, you, these people got to be licensed. You can't, you can't let them slip through your hands like that.
Okay. And then just to, I can do that after. Okay. Thank you.
Alder Johnson?
I don't have a question, Mayor. I'd just speak on the item.
Okay, sounds good. Motion to close the floor?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alder Burnett, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Thanks, sir, for coming and offering your testimony. Appreciate it. Alder Johnson and then...
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to offer up an amendment, and if there's a second, then I would speak to it. But I would move to amend the motion to... Replace the word deny with approve.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to approve the application. That was seconded by a bunch of people. We'll go with Alder Steyer. Alder Eck?
So the reason for the, for the motion, Mayor, is, I mean, when you, when you think about sort of the, the spectrum of infractions, these are, these are pretty minor infractions. For those not aware, a licensed establishment is only required to have one licensed operator on premise. So you could have 10 bartenders working. Only one of them needs to be a licensed operator. And so, you know, so it's one of those things where I can see that being a very easy thing to misplace or slip, and it's not to excuse the mistake. It sounds like you've taken actions to, to correct that. And I think that's ultimately what we want to see. And so, you know, if, if, and again, these, some of these are 10 years old, right? And, and again, a minor infraction. So I think, you know, if we're sitting here a year from now, and you've submitted your application to renew your liquor license, and there's more infractions, I think, then this council might have a different conversation. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. We don't have the legal right to put you on probation or put provisions on this or anything like that, and I don't think we need to do that. But this isn't like another establishment where we recently, you know, they were, they were serving alcohol when they weren't licensed at all. Major infraction, right? I mean, these are, this is much smaller. So I, I support this, and, and just trust, of course, that with the new business model and, and new training, new practices in place, that, that this will be the last time, hopefully, that we hear from you, and you will have a fruitful and successful business, and all will be good with the world, so.
Thanks, Alder. So we have that amendment and a second. Alder Eck, did you want to speak as well?
Oh, no.
Nope, okay.
I, I spoke already, and I didn't, yeah.
That's great. Alder, Alder Campbell, you're in the queue as well. Are you, are you good, or?
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Make sure you press your button. Alder Galvin, then Alder Steyer.
Attorney Bunker, first thing that can come before the council and...
So we're going to have a restaurant with a piano, and they're not going to serve anyone under 50 years of age. And as soon as they get the license, the very next day, they could close the kitchen and serve anyone from 21 on up. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct.
And there's nothing we can do about that unless there's?
Once we license the establishment, their business plan or their business model can change. We don't have any control over that. We can obviously have, try and get assurances from the business owner and have communications and create a relationship with them, which PD does, does do that, um, just to make sure that they have the right, um, procedures and, and protocols in place to ensure that they're gonna have a, a safe, um, and lawful establishment. But correct, we, we don't have any, we don't have any purview over their business plan and business model. It can change.
Okay. Um, and when we do these background checks, do we check other than just Green Bay? I mean, I, do we check other businesses that they've run?
Correct. We do, we do CCAP, and then we obviously check our own municipal court system. So, um, we, we don't have the ability of checking other municipal courts, um, for offenses. So, anything that would have risen to the level of, of a circuit court action would show up. Um, and, um, for this, for this applicant, it was just municipal level violations for Green Bay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, this is a tough one. I, I'd like to apologize, Mr. Charles, if there was some miscommunication, uh, on this issue. You know, between Zoom and meetings and this and that, I may have led him to believe that he didn't have to show. So, that's on me, and I apologize if that's the case. I feel confident in the fact that, like I said, there aren't that many errors here or problems that I see on this list. I feel that, um, the fact that the police were involved, that there's a business plan in place, I feel confident with that. So, I'm, I'm very much in favor of approving.
Thanks, Alder. Any final comments? We have the amendment offered by Alder Johnson to turn this into an approval. We have a second for that. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay? The ayes have it. That amendment is successful. Entertained.
Motion to approve is amended?
Second.
Motion to approve is amended, made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and that item has been approved as amended. Onto report of the Equal Rights Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Galvin. Um, Alder Burnett has suggested item one be pulled. Any others? Right here, no others. All in favor of the remainder of that report? Will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved, with the exception of item one. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell. Is there a second? No second? Okay. Seconded by Alder Campbell. Uh, that item was pulled by Alder Burnett. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, mayor. I watched the Equal Rights Commission where this was discussed, and there were a few commissioners who didn't really understand or know what the Human Rights Campaign is. So, we're looking to get a hundred percent score on a municipal, municipality equality index by 2024, which is a score given by the Human Rights Campaign. And what I would, uh, like to do is make a motion to hold this item and request that the Human Rights Campaign presents, similar to the Sustainability Commission, to the city council before we decide if we should push for the hundred, depending on what they determine we should do to get to that score. So, I'd like to make a motion to hold and for the city to set an invitation to the Human Rights Campaign to present to the city council.
Motion has been made to hold this item, extend an invitation to the Human Rights Campaign, um, to talk about the municipal equality index. That was made by Alder, uh, Burnett, seconded by Alder Weary. Discussion on that, that motion? I'd know if I were looking at the queue. Alder Scannell?
I believe they have a, a checklist that they've, we've already had, it's already been published, that we didn't, that we, how we scored, uh, just last year, I think it was. So, all we have to do is check, look at that list and we will know. I mean, perhaps you need, uh, staff has that. I don't know. I don't think I have that anymore, but certainly.
It's available online.
It's available online. So, I don't, I don't know that we need a presentation. Alls we need to do is look at that list and determine for ourselves, uh, if there's anything on there that's objectionable or whatever, uh, questionable or needed to be amended or whatever. So, I, I don't, I think, uh, maybe to have staff present that instead of, or to, I don't even know. This is gonna be in 2024 going forward. So, we got plenty of time to look at that and decide what we want to do with that. So, I, I, I don't support the motion. I don't think we need to do that. I don't think we need a presentation. We just look at that. It's online. And anything we want to do with it, we can do going forward. So, thank you.
Thanks, Alder Scannell. Additional comments from council? Alder Galvin?
Uh, this is for Alder, uh, Burnett. You, you said from viewing the, uh, the video, you thought some of the committee members didn't know what they were voting on or?
If I may, mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, i- it's not so much because Director Folds explained it to the, the members before they voted. What I'm getting at is, you know, when you say Human Rights Campaign, some members did not know what the Human Rights Campaign is or what they advocate for, and it was clarified later. But my point is for this city council, if we're going to make it a, a priority or refer to staff to get a tw, a perfect hundred, I think it would be a good courtesy for them to present to the city council what their objectives, what their goals are, because there are some controversial things, um, to get to a hundred. I'm not saying that I necessarily disagree or agree at this point, but I do think that the greater community should have a little more clarity and understanding before, you know, we just go ahead and say to staff, we want to get the full hundred percent.
All right. And what, what are some of the things you find questionable? I'm looking at this report here that we've already received in 2021.
Um, the, I think Director Folds could probably answer that, but there was one particular score where if we convert bathrooms or build bathrooms at, you know, city facilities, uh, that are gender neutral, of course, there's a cost to that. There are a lot of things that, that, that we can score points on. But I do think it, it requires maybe a little more, um, clarity and explanation from the Human Rights Campaign before we, as a city government, say, yes, for sure, we want to work towards getting a hundred percent. I think it's good government. It's a special interest group. I'm not saying it's a invalid group or that it's a bad group, but basically, we're going by an independent score from an outside institution or agency. And I do think that as a council, we, we should get a presentation from them so that we can decide if we, we are going to pursue getting a hundred percent score.
Alder Galvin?
So, based on your, your information so far that, that you've been able to determine, you think it's worth the city pursuing this, at least?
It's worth getting a presentation so we can ask questions of, of the leaders of the group. I think that's completely appropriate.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Alder. Uh, Chief Folds, I'd like to weigh in.
I just want to make sure I'm clear with this. Alder Burnett, you're asking for the Human Rights Campaign to do a presentation, not the Equal Rights Commission?
Yes, exactly. Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds good. And then, obviously, it's, it's up to them if they would attend to that. And, um, and I guess part of it is, part of the criteria is they score every capital in the, in the US, every, I think, two hundred largest cities and then the top five largest city of every state. So, whether we present or provide them with information, they will always score us every year. Just want, put that out there.
Right.
Thanks, Chief Folds. Um, Alder Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I, I, I'm gonna support the motion because I don't, I don't know that there's necessarily any kind of time urgency to this. So, I think having more information is certainly always better. You know, when I look at this scorecard, I will say it's very convoluted to me. When I first looked at it, I wasn't sure what was being scored or what we were missing scores on. Um, I, I think having some clarity on that would certainly be useful. But, but the primary reason, I think, is, is wanting to recognize that if we, if we pass this today, I mean, essentially, we're, we are, even though it's a work plan, we're making a commitment and a pledge to work towards these things, even though there's a policy that's gotta likely come before us later. So, I think that's kind of where we ended up in this conundrum a little bit with green infrastructure, right, is we passed a plan at one point that said we're gonna work towards that. And then many of us were kind of surprised, the majority of us were surprised, uh, when green infrastructure proposal came before us, and we felt like we didn't have enough information or knowledge to adequately make a decision on that. So, I think it's a, it's a good practice to, to get this information, just so that we can head that off. Again, there's not much on here that, you know, I, I, there's not anything that I'm looking at this that I look at and say, we should work against. But I think having that information would be good so that everybody knows what we're doing. And, and I would even say it'd be great if they can come in personally, but to Director, uh, Chief Folds, sorry. I gotta remember the new title. Chief Folds' point, um, if they can't make it in here, because they're working with cities all across the country, I appreciate that. I'm perfectly fine with having staff substitute in their place, uh, to talk about their information, their scoring process, that type of stuff, if, if they're not available to present.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
Can we amend the motion accordingly?
Yeah, I would offer up that amendment unless, uh, Alder Burnett's willing to just accept it as a friendly amendment, but just to say that, that, uh, our staff can present in pla, extend the invitation, but that our staff can present in their place if they're not available to do it.
Okay, so that, is that an amendment you're making, Alder?
Uh, if, if, if Alder Burnett does not want to accept it as a friendly amendment, it is an amendment.
If I could, mayor. Uh, yeah, I, yeah, I, I'm against that amendment, just because, you know, let's be real. It's a, it's an interest group, and I'm not saying that it's a bad interest group. I'm not saying I disagree with what it is. But if they want to score us and it's a hundred percent, we should hear from them what the benefits are, because there are some controversial things that have happened in other municipalities, uh, in regards to getting that hundred percent score. So, I think it, it is completely, I, I want to learn. I want to learn more about them. I want to understand how their criteria is, is met and what we could do to get to that hundred percent score, so.
It's an amendment, mayor.
Okay. Sounds good. So, Alder, Alder Johnson makes the amendment that he had stated, which is essentially, um, staff could stand in for the Human Rights Campaign if we're unable, um, to get them to attend a meeting, understanding that we would make that invitation to them. Um, so that has been seconded by Alder Scannell. All right, any discussion on the amendment? Alder Galvin?
Thank you. And, uh, maybe this goes to Chief Folds. Um, i- is there a timeline on, you know, I mean, I'm willing to wait. I, you know, it'd be nice to hear it from the horse's mouth. I mean, I, I'm sure staff is, is well versed on this, but there may be questions that staff is not able to answer, and that's why I'm willing to give this some time to, to make it, uh, able for someone from this organization to, to come here and meet with us. Uh, and I don't know if we, we need to set something like that in, in this amendment or this motion, or if we can just, you know, say, hey, six months, you know, at least, uh, you know, I don't want to get like, oh, next week they couldn't make it. So, here you go.
Right.
Prefer we give them some time to be able to respond. Thank you.
Chief Folds?
So, the timeline for every year's scorecard is, has to be submitted by the end of July. Um, so, I was, so right now, I guess staff is in the process of working with ERC to work on the scorecard. So, um, I guess in that vein, we'll be working on it, but we can still work on them to come and present as well. So, my assumption is maybe the next, you know, thirty, forty-five days, they could, you know, present to the council. That should be enough time for us to, for you guys to hear their, their input on more about the organization than us to work towards the scorecard.
Are you good? Okay. Other comments or questions on the amendment? Seeing none? Alder Scannell?
Uh, I'll support it, but I, I still don't think it's necessary in that anything that's going to require, uh, that's gonna be controversial or, or questionable, is gonna require coming before us. Like with the bathrooms, that's gonna be more than just a policy change. That's gonna require funding and so on. So, I, 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 I think, I think, again, it, it's a plan. We could say, yes, go forward with the plan. And anything that, that needs to come before council is gonna come before council. And that doesn't mean that we can't say, oh, we went, we agreed to a hundred percent plan, so we can't, you know, we gotta go along with this. I mean, that's ridiculous. I, I just don't, I don't quite get it. But if some people want some more information, I, I won't stand in the way there, but it, it doesn't make much sense to me, but I'll support it. Thank you.
Alder, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment? Will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
No.
I just wanted to repeat it. Um, are we gonna then vote on that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we, this is an amendment.
So, I keep track of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, this, so this is the amendment that Alder Johnson proposed. We're voting on that, and then we'll have to vote on if it is successful, which it appeared to be. We'll have to vote on the item as it was amended. So, this is just on the amendment.
Okay.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
No, no.
The ayes appear to have it. Um, so that amendment has been adopted. Entertained a motion to?
Motion to approve is amended.
Motion to approve is amended, uh, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Steyer. Uh, comments on the amended motion? Alder Brunet?
Can we ask for it for on a board, on the board?
Yep, absolutely. Alder Burnett?
Yeah, thank you. I just. Director Folds, you, you'll be making that contact with the Human Rights Campaign. And please, you know, just, just stress that as a body, as a council, if, if we're going, because we went from twenty-eighth of eighty-four, which is commendable, but if we're gonna go to a hundred, I really think that they should appear before the body. So, please, you know, express my, uh, desire in, in that regard. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Right. Um, and then you just wanted the recorded vote? Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none. So, this will be the motion to approve as amended, and we will use the board.
So, approve, if I could, just approve to hold until the Equal Rights Campaign or city staff can present about the score. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yes. Thank you, Alders. Do you may vote?
There, there's a roll call ongoing? So, the, the vote is to, uh, adopt as amended by Alder Johnson's, um, amendment. No, that amendment has already been adopted.
Alder Eck, how would you like to be recorded? Alder Eck, how would you like? Thank you. That was eleven to one.
It disappeared.
I know.
Yeah, so that was adopted eleven to one.
Very weird.
Onto receiving place on file?
Motion received and placed on file.
Alder Jo, or Alder Scannell makes a motion to receive and place on file the building report from March twenty twenty-two and the municipal court monthly financial report. That was seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Those have been received and placed on file. Committee of the whole. This is just one item here. Consideration with possible action on a resolution authorizing the execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary. Uh, explanation needed for council or? No? Alder Campbell? Asking for, is it Attorney Bungard or? General Manager Quirk?
Yeah, uh, this, we have to do this, um, through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. It has to go to the city instead of the utility. We've got a resolution that then, once the city approves it, it will be administered by us. But this loan is one that we applied for to continue our program of removing, um, services in the city that may have been hooked to lead at one time. These, we've gotten all of our lead out. Now, we're working on the galvanized services that, um, were once hooked to lead because they've known the iron in the galvanized service attracts to the lead, and so we're trying to get those out. We have about four hundred left, and we've applied. Um, this one point five million is going directly to our citizens who have galvanized services. So, almost all of this money is going to the people to replace their portion of the service that may have been hooked to lead at one time.
Thank you for that explanation.
We have about four hundred left. We started with about eight hundred. We got about three hundred done, less. It's all over. Any house that was probably before nineteen forty had a potential of lead. So, we've been in, checking all the homes. Yeah, it's water because of the Safe Drinking Water Act, yeah. The sewer, if there was lead in the sewer, you probably wouldn't care that much because it'd be going down into the treatment plant.
Thank you, General Manager Quirk. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Um, that item has been approved onto our resolutions.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote. That was made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion on the resolutions? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Give me a moment.
Here, do we have to conduct the vote on suspension? Give you that?
We did not.
Sorry. All in favor of? Sorry. All in favor of suspending the rules and taking up these items with one roll call vote was signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Alder Scannell makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Alder Johnson. Now we will use the board.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote. Thank you. That passes 12-0.
Right. That is adopted unanimously. Onto ordinances, first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, take up these items with one vote. That was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Motion to advance these ordinances to a second and final reading made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. Those ordinances are advanced. Petitions and communications? Any communications from our Alders? Alder Johnson? Alder Johnson?
26 cents, Scannell. I'm going to look to Director Sexuality for some guidance on where this one should go. For consideration, possible action on the funding and creation of a comprehensive waterfront development plan.
Initial instinct would be RDA on that one, Alder Johnson.
Beautiful. So that is to the RDA.
Thank you, Alder. Any others? All right. Entertained a motion to refer. Motion to refer made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Johnson with Scannell not appreciating it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. That has been referred to the proper authority. Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Ek. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. Were adjourned. Thanks, everyone.